Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Delaware County Council Meeting, the first one of 2019. This is their reorganization meeting. If you will all stand, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll do the roll call. Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
First.
Ms. Lassiter?
Here.
Ms. Piper?
Here.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
First item on the agenda is the nominations for president of the county council.
I move to nominate Ron Quaken Bush.
My second.
Any other nominations? Nominations closed. Roll call. Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
You don't want to play the rest of the bar.
My pen. Next item on the agenda will be selecting a vice president.
I'd like to nominate Scott Alexander for vice president. My second.
The other nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Has the agenda been posted properly? Thank you. I need a motion to approve it. Agenda has posted?
Yes.
Delayer of motion to approve the agenda as posted.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Jessica. Second by Larry.
Roll call. Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Moving right along, we need to approve minutes for December 11 and special meeting December 26. Move by Larry. Second. Move by Scott. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
I abstain. Can I just hear the 11 close on?
Yes.
Yeah. I approve.
Ms. Piper?
I approve.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
I abstain.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Before we proceed further, I would like to introduce Ryan Ballard as our new member.
Hello. Can I say something? Or was that not allowed? Or was that the introduction for me to say something?
If you want to, you may.
I just want to say, I appreciate the opportunity and I'm going to do the best I can. So, thank you, guys.
Now, we will move on to the financial and transfer agenda.
Do you want to do financial first?
We usually do transfers.
I don't care. Transfer. Okay.
I've got the transfer up.
Hey. This is a major transfer from county clerk to voter registration. 101, 143, minus 30,082, 92. 129, 125, plus 30,082, 92. 102C, 143, minus 25,316. 130, 125, plus 25,316. 103A, 143, minus 25,95. 130, 125, plus 25,905. 104E, 143, minus 25,316. 132, 125, plus 25,316. 105A, 143, minus 4,555, 68. 133, 125, plus 4,555, 68. So this question is...
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Jessica. Second by Larry. This was favorable at finance. Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Thank you. The county commissioner... Don't have to reorganize. It doesn't matter. County commissioners, 112, human resource secretary, minus 32,252, 32. A112, human resource secretary, plus 32,252, 32. C111, human resource director, minus 46,038, 48. D111, human resource director, plus 46,038, 48. 112, human resource secretary, minus $247.16. D111, human resource director, plus $247.16. Total request zero.
Move by Larry. Second by Jessica. Questions?
This was favorable by finance committee.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Coroner, 102, chief deputy coroner, plus $8,249. A102, chief deputy coroner, minus $8,249. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Jessica. Second by Jane. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Circuit Court, 197, part-time, minus $475. B170, assistant court reporter, which is a name change, plus $475. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Can we do the next one on the next page as well, Donics? It's the same thing.
Oh, yeah. A197, minus $475, 106, assistant court reporter, name change, plus $475. Total request is zero.
So moved to approve. Ms. Jessica? You're welcome.
Jessica, two. Second. Change, second. That motion will include both?
Correct.
Okay.
I think we discussed this already in the past, Hannah. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Thank you.
Emily short circuited everybody by handing out these papers.
Well, I want to be prepared, Ron.
I'd just like to give you a little bit, too.
Well, I mean, just to, I guess, clarify, there was some discussion on this in finance, and these job descriptions were approved by us back last year.
Right.
And this was just appropriating the money for those changes.
That's why I said we discussed it earlier. Okay. When you do emergency medical, these are just new hires?
Yes.
I think we could have a motion to approve as presented.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Favorable at finance.
Motion by Jessica. Second by Scott. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Public defender's office, same reason.
Same reason. Motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
Summon.
Second.
Larry. Jessica. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Ron, you may want to... We've got to do a change.
I appreciate it. Thank you for approving.
Boy, she's...
Mr. Harvey, public defender's office. I just wanted to take the opportunity, for those of you who didn't get to meet him at Finance Committee, this is Kelly Bryan, our new chief public defender. So, I wanted to take a minute to thank you for approving our transfers, so Kelly can get paid his salary, and to introduce you to him.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Communication Center, same reason, new hire.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Jessica. Second by Scott. Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
And Ron?
Paul Singleton, Director, Delaware County, 101. The payout for the previous spot will be done Wednesday, tomorrow, so it's my intent to fill this on Thursday.
Right away. Okay. You did a good job.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, the next one should say jail. And it's correctional office, new hire.
Okay, yeah. I get you. This is just a transfer to a new hire.
Move to approve as presented.
Move by Jessica.
Second.
Second by Larry. For you in the audience that are new, haven't been here before, we, in an order to somewhat keep an eye on employee positions and such, have a local ordinance that requires that the office holders come to us for approval of the line item for the new hire, so that the new hire gets the right pay, and not always the pay of the previous employee, because the previous employee may have some add-ons in it that aren't a part of our personnel hiring policy. So, it's a little complicated, but it's real simple, once the paperwork's done and the Finance Committee reviews it. So, actually, we, as a council, then, to use a loose term, rubber stamp it, but at least it comes before the public and is in the record. Okay. Sheriff's Department, this is the same thing, I believe. Is that correct?
This is...
Or is it more called...
I got it down to jail.
The jail. Oh, the jail. I'm sorry. I thought we did it. I guess I wrote jail down and...
No.
Okay, roll call on the jails.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Okay. Now, sure.
This next one, you may want to...
These are like promotions, demotions, new hires, whatever.
This one, you may want to read and discuss. There was some discussion at Finance Committee, and probably for the record, we ought to talk to this here on it.
So, you want me reading first?
Well, I mean, we could approve these as presented, I guess, but...
Been in discussion.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Okay. Second. And then we'll let the Finance Committee carry from there, Scott.
Okay. Yeah, we... I know we questioned this, and if you could, just for the other council and, I guess, the audience's benefit, we don't normally have this many people here. There was a concern in here that some of these positions that had been, I don't know if it's the right word, is demoted or moved down in position, were carrying a pay that was greater than they should have been paid. And I think we saw that in the Finance Committee, that that was not the case, and I think that the reasoning on here was probably the longevity. But can you confirm that, just for the council's benefit, so that they understand there are no increases in pay from moving somebody down that shouldn't be in there?
Right. There's a longevity amount that each person carries, and just so it will be clear from the committee, I put those on separate lines, that you can see what those amounts were. Those actually stay with the employee no matter what line they're in, but if they were demoted, their base salary was demoted or was put down to what their lower amount would be. But that rolling amount, as I call it, goes with them no matter what position they're in with the department. So, that's why they're listed separately.
And all of these separate listings are due to the longevity that follows?
Yes.
Those employees?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
That was my question. Scott, clear it up for me.
So, the longevity, like she said, is, no matter if you're a patrolman or a captain, you're still entitled to that same amount of longevity. The rest of the shifts, every time a new sheriff is elected, he's allowed to bring up his own administration. So, we brought some people up that were promoted. The people they replaced were demoted back to wherever they were before. So, there are no new promotions or no new demotions as far as the budget's concerned. It was just purely personnel shifts for a net gain or loss of zero.
Do you guys think this is everything, or will we see this maybe next month? Are there more changes, or...
There'll be a few more.
Okay.
This is the majority of them. Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Public defender's office, same reason.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Move by Jessica. Second by Jane. Questions? Comments? Roll call.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Public safety, that should say prosecutor, 173, insurance, minus $255. 118 investigator, plus $255. Total request is zero.
Move to approve. Larry. Second by Jessica. What about this? Is this approved by finance?
Yeah, it's just the 60% longevity that should have followed that person.
Roll call.
That we keep forgetting to correct it by the way.
Roll call.
Hopefully, it'll be correct next year.
Roll call.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Pretrial diversion, 102, deferral clerk, minus 2,000. 101, investigative director, plus 2,000. 102, deferral clerk, minus 2,000. A103, receptionist, plus 2,000. 102, deferral clerk, minus 7,500. 180 investigator, plus 7,500. 102, deferral clerk, minus 1,000. 116 investigator, plus 1,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Jessica. Second by Scott. Or is it prosecutor?
We're all right here.
Is this a way to give people raises, or are you going to explain it to us in a different way?
I'm your health and prosecution attorney. For those of you that were on the council last year in December, this is sort of a carryover from that. We had eliminated a position of deferral coordinator, got paid roughly $17,000, $18,000. Obviously eliminated, did not refill it. We spread those duties among other employees, and so this is compensation for those employees that are taking up all of those duties that are not being completed by the position that we eliminated.
Did you review the job descriptions of these folks?
Yes.
Are they still within the parameters of their job description?
I believe so.
We didn't cover that in Finance Meeting, but did... I don't think we did. We may have asked the question, did HR take a look at these as well, as far as job descriptions?
No. No.
Because these are outside the scope of what was in the original job description, because this was filled by a different person.
I'm just a little confused. I...
What are you confused about?
Well, I don't totally agree with it, to be honest with you. But if the job descriptions weren't reviewed by HR, then that leaves a little cloud on it.
A couple of things, Mr. President. The money that's coming out of is the pretrial diversion, honey, not the general fund. Second of all, as you held for Mr. Arnold's discussion with the council in the past, prosecutor's office is a state, considered legally a state employee office, as well as everybody in my office, although they're paid except for me by the county. So, whether or not HR approves of what we're doing, I don't think that that's required under the law. Never has been.
Well, I understand that. We kind of like to think Delaware County operates under home rule, and we're all part of the same team, and we all kind of go by the same rules.
I agree. So, that's why we came to Finance, like we did in December. They approved it in December. We went again to Finance again, just sort of as if this is what we're doing. Again, it absolutely approved in December, and we're back here in January for the exact same thing.
When you said you were to us in December for the same thing, this is the exact same thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was only for the last quarters, for October, November, December, but it was for the same...
Oh, that wasn't in our area.
It was for the same thing.
Has it been done this way in the past? I mean, I don't remember.
We always had this position. This position was served previously.
That's right. Okay. They told you in December that they could be back in January to do the rest of it?
Well, I'll only say, listening and seeing are two different things. Maybe we didn't totally understand what the proposal was, but I'll call a roll call.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eligible homestead, 106, headwood keeper, minus $1,048.15. 106A, woodkeeper, 1,048.15. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Move by Jessica.
Second.
Second by Scott. Questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush?
Yes.
And we should have an addition from the corners.
Okay. Yeah. You want to do it right?
Go ahead.
Okay.
We just moved it.
On the financial agenda, the very, very first one was the coroner. That has been withdrawn because we're going to add it to the transfer agenda. So, on a transfer, it will be coroner 198, part-time, plus 1,000, from 311 autopsy, minus 1,000. Total request is zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Thanks for working on that stock. Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Financial agenda.
Okay. Edit 310, edit project, $3 million. Total request, $3 million.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jessica, second by Larry. This is just to pay the bills that are due, right?
Yes.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
For the audience information, several years ago, the edit budget was just approved on an annual basis. The council has changed the procedure and now we approve the timely bills that the auditor has to pay in a non-entire amount at one time for a period of time. So that's why this was asked as bad as the way I asked it. Convention tourism's been withdrawn, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, cornerstone perpetuation, 311 services for locating cornerstones, $30,000, total request $30,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Larry, second by Jessica. Any questions of the surveyor?
This was approved. I know there were some questions in finance and this is part of the program of continuing to locate those cornerstones that hadn't been done in previous years.
The surveyor is required by statute to identify and locate so certain percentage, right?
Right. I don't remember the certain percentage, like 1% or 2%, and there hadn't been anything done for 10 years.
Oh, is that right?
And what this is, is this is a project that I put together last year where they went behind the state when they were repaving Highway 28. So they were behind the state, so it slowed it up. And they got the physical work done, but they haven't had to put it in digital format, so I had to reappropriate it since it had been built in before the end of the year, so.
This is a contractual program?
Yeah, it's just one we put together last year while they were repaving 28.
Roll call, please.
Tell, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tell the council where the money comes from for this perpetuation fund.
It comes from the cornerstone perpetuation fund.
Well, from recording fees as well, she's...
Yes, it comes for the recording fees. Is there not only a dollar or 50 cents?
I think it's a dollar for every document.
It weighs that too, which is nice.
Yeah, so that's...
It's $5 now, isn't it?
Yes.
So that's where that money comes from.
That's a shameless plug for the recorders office.
It is not!
Well, it also shows that it's fee-based and not property tax-based. So it's a user-fee-based function. And those cornerstones are monuments. Out in fields or maybe in the middle of a highway, you'll see a big old thing like that. And what these people do with their... Of course, it's probably a whole lot different now with...
With the technology.
Yeah, the technology available. But they still have to physically go look at them, right?
Correct.
Mark them and put them on a map and turn them back into you for record?
Yes.
Okay. Did we do roll call?
No.
Okay, we'll do that.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes. Ryan, for your information, I forgot to mention to you, but when we do the vote, you can tell it's round robin. You don't get to vote in the same position every time. The auditor keeps track of that, so.
Thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Casa.
Casa Fund, 105 volunteer supervisor, $3,097. $392 instructional cost, $3,000. $394 seminars, $1,000. $395 volunteer recognition, $530. Total request, $7,627.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jessica. Everybody Scott. Emily, you're doing this one.
Yes, sir. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. We did some adjustments at the budget hearings last year. If you remember, this was, had to do with that new employee that you guys approved through the funding. And we wanted to raise her salary, so we had to come back at the beginning of the year to get these re-appropriated. So that's what this is.
I remember that. Anyone else have a question? Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Casa JCAP program, okay. There's not enough money for what the request was because there was confusion on the request, so it's now going to be changed.
Just one, yeah.
197 part-time one is now $1,234. And the rest is zero.
Yeah. We had already appropriated some money last year and we got confused. So that money's already there.
Total request, $1,234.
So we're taking out 198 as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's already been appropriated last year at budget.
And there's enough money already appropriated to cover the FICA for the $1,234.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Jessica, second by Jane, roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Okay, capacity building grant, this is a change to... The 198 is now zero. 171 now zero. 331 printing is now zero. 391, $1,000. 393, $3,000 for a total request of $4,000.
Move to approve, as presented.
Second.
Move by Larry, second by Jessica. Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Cambridge, 310 contract, GPS, $2,400. Total request, $2,400.
You made you bridge an highway together.
Highway 310, GPS contract, $9,600. Total request, $9,600.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Jessica. Second by Scott.
This was approved in finance, but we may want to hear what this is all about.
Robert Jesse, Delaware County Highway. What we're doing is installing these in our vehicles. If I have a truck out in the middle of the winter and we can't contact them on the radio, there's usually an issue. And the only way for us to find them is to either get out and drive around or implement these into our vehicles so we can find them immediately. You know, it's a safety precaution. If I get complaints from homeowners that your truck sideswiped my mailbox, I can go back and look at that and see whether we did or whether we didn't. If I didn't have a truck there, we're not paying for it. You know, we didn't do it. And in court, I think these will stand up in case of a lawsuit.
Is this a one-time fee or just...
No, this is a contract.
You're a contract, you're a contract.
And it's a three-year contract. So we'll have to pay the $12,000 for the next three years, which next year I won't get any in our budget as a line minimum.
If you get a complaint from somebody out in the public that so-and-so drops out at...
I can look at their...
Not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Exactly.
And you can also track them?
You can track them.
Okay.
Same goes back for two years. So if something happened a year and a half ago, we can go back and look at that.
And I think I asked you this in finance, but just for the public, this is to go in all of the vehicles at the highway department?
Yes.
Any other questions? I know most of all the road trucks have this, you know, commercial trucks.
Yep.
Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
GIS map.
Thank you.
241, $1,000. 310 professional services, $70,200. 323 travel, $5,000. 331 printing, $5,500. 393 schooling, $5,000. 441 computer GIS equipment, $4,000. Total request, $90,700.
Move to approve.
Move by Jessica, second by Larry. Questions?
Martin might want to give us our annual review.
Update?
Yeah.
This is the fund out of which we pay for the new aerial photography, which is currently on a contract that does that every other year. So we are due this year for new aerial photography that will be flown in the spring. And that will be reflected on the Beacon website. And that's sort of the main, largest portion of this budget. This budget is also used to send our GIS professionals for professional training to the annual ESRI conference, so.
And it's fees collected from services from your department, right?
From copies, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. We also have different departments, like several, probably at least 10 different departments, that help provide monies for the aerial photography because they all use it, everybody uses it.
But these are, it's a fee-based budget, not a tax-based budget?
Yes, it's a...
Closed.
Yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Okay, Martin, I just caught this one. Unsafe building, 310. I've got another change for you. Okay, unsafe building, 310, recording fees, $100. 364 unsafe building, $30,900. Total request, $31,000. But there's only $29,693 available. So you need to cut $1,307 from somewhere.
Well, that's easy, we'll take it from 364.
I had to catch this one, yeah, but...
Yeah. The, and one thing I will say is that I will... I may be transferring some funds into this account. And when I do that, then I can also do, file a new appropriation if we need it because I know Steve Minnick, the buildings commissioner, has plans for demolition of one property. If you, in the filing of this, if you read the, I don't know what we call this form, but on that form, I tried to give you an update on the different addresses that tells you what the status of the unsafe buildings out there and what Steve will be working on, so.
Okay, so this is now going to say, 310 recording fees, $100. 364 unsafe building, $29,593. Total request of $29,693.
Got it.
Good. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move by Jessica.
Second.
Second by Scott. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Quickenbush.
Yes.
Okay, comprehensive plan. 241 computer support, $1,000. 310 professional services, $158,900. 323 travel, $3,500. 331 printing, $3,000. 371 computer rentals, $3,000. 391 dues and subscriptions, $6,000. 393 schooling, $6,000. 395 public meetings, $1,000. 441 machinery and equipment, $5,000. 444 vehicles, $25,000. Total request, $212,400. But she doesn't have enough money in this fund either. So originally, she was going to have to cut $24,784, but when we talked about the anticipated revenue that she gave me, she forgot $24,750. So in reality, she needs to cut $500 from somewhere.
So we're taking that out of 241, just subtract $500 from 241. And I'll provide Donna with the new anticipated revenue.
Oh, here at the top, make that $500.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the...
June 11, 9.
June 11, 9, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is a budget that's not reviewed at budget time. It comes up in January on its own fiscal basis.
Yes, it's like a cash budget, yeah. Not based on general fund or tax...
Where you're getting money back from grants and stuff.
Yes. Yeah.
Any question?
Move to approve, as presented.
Second.
Move by Larry, second by Jessica. Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Sex and violent offender, 200 supplies, $5,000. 300 phone computer, $2,500. Total request, $7,500.
Move to approve.
Move by Jessica.
Second.
Larry, second. Questions?
This was approved in finance.
Okay. Again, this is fee-based. Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
On these fee-based funds, the office holder or like the official allows these funds to accumulate and then they find need for certain items. And in a lot of cases, it relieves the general fund obligation to keep the different operation in good stead, I guess. Helps the taxpayer. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Minnick, 196 holiday jail, $5,000. 171 FICA, $500. 241 supplies, $50,000. 371 contracts, $5,000. 362 repairs, $20,000. 441 equipment, $75,000. Total request, $155,500.
Move to approve.
Move by Jessica.
Second.
Everybody Scott. Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Ineligible homestead, 106A head bookkeeper, $5,660. Total request, $5,660.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Jessica, second by Scott. Can I ask what this is, please?
Because this is with Gail retiring. Her time runs through, I think, mid-March. And so I talked to the finance committee and to go without the head bookkeeper for two months. I thought we could just go ahead and pay her out with our ineligible homestead money and that way our new bookkeeper can start.
Which is a little contrary to what we've been trying to practice, correct?
It is, but we did agree that it would put somebody in a real bind to have two months' worth of, as much money goes through this county to try and catch up on it and they put us in a bad position. We're trying to go to our accrual system also by April 1st, so it just isn't really at a, you know, due time. It's better to go ahead and try to fill it. And with most of the, Gail had been here for a long, long tenure and there was, I think you may have explained in finance committee what part of that was. I mean, she accumulated a lot of... Accumulated vacation time, gets after sick time and things like that. But I believe it runs through mid-March. And like I said, you can do without somebody for a couple of weeks of vacation, but for your bookkeeper for two months, I think somebody has to do the books.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to...
We're here, maybe we got something else.
One more?
Yeah, hold on.
I handled this.
Oh, this, do you want to do this now?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we're going to...
Okay, I'll explain this thing.
Okay.
I didn't know we were going to do that.
And I gave you the last year's, which the salary was $32,299. Going, when Lauren was putting in the new salaries, she asked me why this position got such a big raise. And honestly, it was just when we went through and added all the $1,000 raises, raises, I didn't realize they had put an additional 2,500 on this one. So I just added the thousand dollars to the, so I went back and double-checked it. So I called Ron, told him what happened. He said, no, the motion, and he had me go back and check with Steve that everybody got a thousand-dollar raise and to pay, start paying this based on the thousand dollars, which I did. So I need for you to make a motion to reduce this by 2,500 to make it correct.
Well, actually, it was an oversight because in our, on our hearings for budget hearings, there were some departments that put increases in salaries in their budget and some didn't.
Yeah.
And in our discussions, we met, we made the discussions that everyone would get the same, exact same amount of pay increase. So this is just a reduction in Department 153, line item 124B, a reduction of 2,500 has approved in error in the 2019 budget. That's what the motion would be.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Okay, Larry, far away.
I'll make a motion to approve transfers and amend the salary ordinance with 5%.
Second.
Moved and seconded, rule call.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Just FYI, that took two hours to go through in Finance Committee and we got it less than an hour today, so.
Okay, now we're going to move on. We have Mr. Brook out here to talk about an application for tax abatement.
I've had the last 45 minutes to look at all of your socks sitting in that row. I want to say that Mr. Ballard gets the award for the most patriotic socks today, so congratulations. Welcome, Ryan. Before.
Let's go ahead.
Yeah, exactly. We'll see how he votes when I get done. Anyways, no, thank you. I'm here today with Muncie Novelty and Indiana Ticket Company. Here today is Hilda Sayer, Jill Gasper, David Broyles, and John Martin, all representing the company. They have submitted two tax abatement applications to the county and have followed the appropriate procedures. Both of the applications have been presented to the Tax Abatement Committee and have received a favorable recommendation on both. I've toured both of the facilities with the Tax Abatement Committee as well as your President, Ron Quickenbush, and thank you for that tour. I want to go through the first one, which is Indiana Ticket Company, this abatement, and there's three pages here, so I'm going to paraphrase some of this to get through this quickly. Indiana Ticket Company Incorporated is located at 9610 North State Route 67 in Albany, Indiana. They're requesting abatement on a Xerox Iridesci 120 Digital Production Press, a CTC Quantum Servo Four Spindle Turret Rewinder, a Sigma Horizontal Flow Rapper, and a Polar 66E Paper Cutter. All I know is that has to do with making tickets. So we've seen that process, it's very impressive. The equipment is needed to meet, expand their production and to meet the volume required by their customers. The equipment is coming from out of state. It's new equipment to Delaware County and to the state of Indiana. They are current on all of their current tax liabilities. They have no judgments, liens, or pending litigation against them. They're headquartered in Delaware County, which is, gives them some additional points. Total number of employees at this company is 48. Seventy-four percent are Delaware County residents. This will generate one new job and this will help retain the 48 that they have at their facility. Starting wage at the company is $10.50, high wage is $21.25, average wage is 15.50. These, the job that will be created is in the 15.50 range. These are entry-level skilled, semi-skilled jobs. They do provide health insurance for their employees. They do provide a 401K retirement-type plan. They pay for continuing education and they have submitted their check for 150 to the county. They provided us with their SB1 form, which is a requirement, and a map of their current location, which is a requirement, and also the quotes and invoices for all of the machinery. That first abatement, these are the numbers that you really, I know, are interested in. This is a revenue-positive abatement, meaning that the county gets some revenue at the same time as the abatement goes on. This is an eight-year abatement. Total abatement over the eight years is 15,870. Total new revenue to the county is 8,120 to the county. So that's the first one. I'm happy to answer questions about that. If not, I will proceed on to the second abatement application.
What was the revenue per selling unit?
8,120. Okay, second abatement is for Muncie Novelty Company, also located at the same address, 9610 North State Route 67, Albany, Indiana. They are an S Corporation. They're purchasing a bander and a stitcher. Equipment is needed to expand their production, also additional volume to meet their customer needs. Total price of this equipment is 2,119,431. It is also new equipment coming from out of state. This company is also current on all tax liabilities, no judgments, liens, or pending litigation. Company has been in business for 82 years, which I think is a good thing. Again, located in Delaware County. Total number of employees is 83. Seventy-two percent are Delaware County residents. This will generate approximately one new employee to do this work and help retain 83 at the facility. Again, the average expected wage is 15.50 an hour. They offer health insurance, 401K, continuing education. They have submitted their check for 150 to the county. I have their SB1, I have their map, and I have their quotes for that one.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, please.
Being a new guy, I'm still learning the rule call here. You said 72% of their hiring staff is going to be Delaware County residents, am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah, 72% of the current employees are Delaware County residents. Yes, that's for one company. The other company was 74% Delaware County residents, so correct. I have here, and I've lost it in my paperwork, but I'll find it. One second, I'll tell you the estimated abatement amount on this also. While I'm looking for that, I wanted to give the council an opportunity to ask any questions of the company or for the company to share anything that they want to share. David, would you like to share anything?
I'll save that question.
Okay.
I'd just make a comment. Thank you for letting us and taking the time to let us tour the facility out there. I learned a lot while I was out there and the quality of the material that comes out of this company is really, really good. They do work for Indianapolis Motor Speedway, NCAA. Are there others that I'm guessing that should be noted?
Yes, when we first got into the event ticketing, we really concentrated on college athletics and that's kind of bled into minor league baseball, NASCAR events, like Scott said, Indianapolis 500, Brickyard 400, places like that. Locally, of course, our first client was Ball State. We also work with Indiana University, Butler University, all the way down to Auburn University, Penn State University, just trying to continue the growth.
And I think it was interesting, we covered some things in the interview about there, about the, how things have changed with the use of, everybody's got a cellphone now and some of these tickets have become so collectible that we think that into the future there'll always be a need to print a ticket.
Yes, that's where the Iridesc Press comes into play. It has some unique features that allow high-end security at a reasonable price.
And I was amazed at all of what was going on out there at the facility. I mean, it was, it was all moving. I mean, it was definitely, and moving like that, I suppose, 24 hours a day.
We hope so, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What impressed me was my education back in the late 60s was partially in the printing industry and nearly everything I learned then is obsolete by a long shot now. And my other evaluation is that what you do out there is probably highly competitive and most of what you do needs to be kept top secret because it is very technical, but by buying these pieces of equipment, you get a hands-on, heads-up in a sense in the industry, but without doing that, I see where you'd be left behind real quick. And I used to go down to Muncie Novelty down here on whatever street it is to buy a fountain pen.
Yeah, we've been very blessed with some very talented people.
Well, they are neighbors of mine. I can see the business from my house and they can see mine and they're very good neighbors. And I would like to, we always thank them privately, but I'd like to thank the business publicly of what they do to help the fairgrounds. All we need to do is call and say, you know, we need wristbands or we need tickets and David is always there to help us. So we're getting returns from them.
Are we ready to make a motion to approve Resolution 2019003 and 004?
We need to approve these separately or do we approve them together?
I'd recommend you do them separately. Okay. Motion for 2019003, resolution.
So moved. Second.
Move by Scott, move by Jessica, rule call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
2019004.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jessica, move by Scott. Rule call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Okay. This year, I, when we made our new appointments, I included, we always kind of encourage our appointees to different boards to come to our meeting verbally, but this year I put it in a letter and Mr. Doug Hutchison has accepted that invitation. He's here today. Would you like to stand up and introduce yourself?
Doug Hutchison, Alcohol Beverage Board.
Any few words you want to say quickly or shortly?
I'm honored to serve on the board.
Thank you, sir, for your service. Appreciate your coming in, so everybody can meet you. Okay, we're ready for personnel, anything on personnel?
Pound in the back.
Oh, way back there. No report? Okay. Next thing is we have some ordinances. Donna, yeah, I'll do that. What do we do on these?
Do it now or do the, I just.
We need to do it now.
Always have to have you.
Encumbrances.
The encumbrances.
Right, right. We've been, at the end of each year, there are bills outstanding that do not get paid out of that year's budget, but will be paid after the first year. So the office holders and elected officials ask the order to encumber money from the 2018 budget so that these bills can be paid and not taken out of the 2019 budget. And encumbrances for the county general are 125,368, 34, Edit Projects, 479, don't know, maybe you better help me here, Donna.
Okay, the grand total is 4,383,398,18. The biggest, the biggest amounts are bridge encumbrances and edit projects. The bridge encumbrances themselves is a million three, edit is a million dollars, and the rest is just various funds, like county generals, 125,000. All the funds are listed. Those are the two major encumbrances.
Community Corrections, 479.
Right, they have to encumber their.
Their retirement budget, right.
Because their budget is from July 1st to June, so.
That's what I was trying to do was specify enough and note that 4 million isn't really out of it. The county general is 125,368.
Right, the rest is all the other.
Yeah. Yeah, like that one of them here, it's quarter of a million. Community Corrections, users fees, 828, 824, so a ton of that.
Right, that's their budget because they're on fiscal, not a calendar year.
Okay, so.
Is this for their whole year, Donna?
That's a balance, it's been spent.
Okay, okay.
So I need a motion to approve the encumbrances as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead, Larry.
Now you had your chance, sir.
Jessica, Larry.
Yes.
Okay, for the record. Rule call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Give me a moment here. We have. Okay, we're going to now talk about three ordinances. 2019004, 2019005, and 2019006. And this has to do with the commissioners' request for approval to fund a lease for a building called Asuns that they own and various other parts. And I have asked Mr. Hughes, our attorney, to actually, as Mr. Brook had said, he's going to be here to represent the commissioners and he called himself an MC for lack of a better term, so we're going to call Mr. Hughes our MC today.
That's great.
Mr. Hughes is our parliamentarian, so I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Brook and Mr. Hughes and the council then will embody me here to answer questions. I'm going to make a stipulation at this point, if the council will approve, because this is going to take some time, that we not have responses from the audience until the council is finished with their review and discussion. Am I okay with everybody? Go ahead.
Might suggest for clarity, if we look at the three ordinances before we get into the presentation, the third ordinance on the Agenda 06 is probably the one you would want to consider first. That's entitled "An Ordinance of the Delaware County Council Concerning a Determination to Enter Into a Build/Operate/Transfer-Lease Agreement." So that is the county council's approval of the action that has been taken by the county commissioners to enter into this build/operate transfer agreement and the lease. And the Indiana statute says when the commissioners do that, when they enter into a lease agreement and when they enter into a build/operate transfer agreement, so-called BOT agreement, in excess of five years, then the council has to approve those. So that would be your first consideration after you have your presentation and discussions. Other two ordinances, 004 and 005, are in the alternative. If you have determined to approve the BOT lease agreement, then the question is how it's going to be paid for. And there are two alternatives, and Mr. Brook and his presenters will discuss that. One of the two ordinances, and I believe it's the one that's 005, provides for a pledge of property taxes as a backup to the edit funding. And you can determine which one that is if you look down to the last whereas provision, which is in brackets right before where it says now, therefore, on the first page. That is the language that constitutes a backup pledge of property taxes in the event for any reason that edit funding is not available. The other ordinance, which I believe is 004, and if I've got them backwards, let me know. The other one, 004, does not have that language. So the funding mechanism there is solely from edit, does not include backup property tax. So first you would consider whether or not to approve the lease and BOT agreement and then secondly, which of the two funding mechanisms you would approve. Again, all of these are actions taken by the county commissioners and are sent here for your approval as the fiscal body. So you're not, the county commissioners have the responsibility of providing a jail facility, you do not. They are asking your approval as a fiscal body for the path that they have chosen to provide that facility and to fund it. Yield at this point to Mr. Brook.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, member of the council. Good morning. Very good. I was going to explain the differences in the two ordinances and you've done an excellent job, Mr. Hughes, and I appreciate that. I'm John Brook, the attorney for the Board of Commissioners. The commissioners are here, somewhere around here, and they're making this presentation to you concerning the build/operate transfer agreement. The commissioners have been reviewing this process for well over a year now. They've entered into a proven ordinance for a build/operate transfer and they're now looking for the financing. Just to update you, there are currently 10 claims that have been filed by prisoners in the Delaware County Courts. Two of those claims have. Two of those claims have been moved up to federal court, and the county has turned those over to the insurance company, and they're paying the deductible on all those claims. The commissioners' proposal is that they would be using Edit funding for the project. And I have Matt Ecklerly here from Umbaugh. I believe that we have shared with all the council members copies of Mr. Ecklerly's financial analysis. If you don't have a copy, Mr. Ecklerly has extra copies for all of you. I think I sent those out to everyone via email. There's one proposal with property tax backup, one without a property tax backup. Mr. Ecklerly also, at the request of the commissioners, has done an analysis on the average annual cost of housing prisoners out of state, or out of county, I mean. That includes the, not only the money that the council appropriates for out of county, but also for overtime, fuel, transportation costs, and that sort of thing, which all comes out of the general fund. We also have Mr. Airbrand from Amaresco. I think he's here somewhere. Right there he is, behind me, to talk about the utility costs at the new facility at the request of one of the council members. And at the end, I did receive one question from the council president that I will try and address about the space out there. So, since I'm just the MC, I'm going to introduce the people. We'll have Mr. Airbrand start, and then I'll be back up to introduce Mr. Ecklerly.
Morning, council members. For the record, my name is Mark Airbrand. I'm a senior account executive with Amaresco. We're an energy services company, and we have worked here in Delaware County to do some energy efficiency improvements to some of your buildings over the past few years. We still do measurement and verification reports for some of your facilities, and we provide that each year, as well as report that to the state of Indiana on those savings. We were asked by our QAW to just give our expert opinion about what utility costs might be for a jail operation or correctional facility. And so, we don't have any dog in this fight at all, other than, and I'm not involved in the project at all. We were just asked to give our opinion on what those costs might be and what we've seen just in our experience of doing approximately 30 jails here in Indiana. So, with me today, I have Doug Monz, who is our senior project development engineer. Been an energy engineer for, what, almost 50 years?
I'm afraid I'm that old.
So, and he's here to just share with you some of the things that we've seen in regards to cost per square foot, because being that this was an existing building, we don't have any past documentation, especially on the way that this would be operated, other than, you know, what we've seen in the industry. And he's here to speak just briefly on that and share with you some of his findings that he's found throughout the years.
I'm Doug Monz. I'm a senior development engineer for Amaresco. The approach that our QAW has taken with the building, and you kind of have two sets of requirements here. You've got a jail, and the facilities we've seen from jails can range anywhere. When we start analyzing the building, they'll be at $3, and I think the last jail we're looking at was over $5 a square foot. So, depending on how the jails are operating and how their equipment is put together, they're operating 24/7, and when the last renovations were made on the jail and how they're being maintained is very critical. The other part of the facility itself is literally looking almost as a school or an office building. And how you control those and how you turn off energy in the building, or how you turn off lights, and how you manage it is critical for managing the utility itself in the facility and its usage. Questions? I know you've got, I kind of went over that rather briefly, but if you've got anything you really are curious about, how we look at facilities. This facility itself will need a new building automation system. We could track a lot of the costing and analyzing how the building's being managed and run, not only on-site, but also remotely. We'll be bringing the facility up to current day standards. Questions?
I read the report. Were, what was indicated in the report? Was that specific to the building? It appeared to be more general in nature as far as the cost per square foot. And I know I talked with Mark maybe a month ago about whether or not the cost analysis was done from usage when it was in operation versus. It doesn't look to me like the report was in-depth and specific to this building. It was more in general in nature. Would that be?
That's absolutely correct. I had not said done, and have done a carrier half or analyzer model of building itself at all, which is something if we're involved with the contract, I would do upfront. And that would, I could give you a much closer analysis of the building, its wall structure, its envelope, and it's how it would be used in the future. So, the answer to your question is that is a very general analysis of that building.
Were you aware of the changes according to the spec plan as far as what those might be? And did that factor into your analysis of that?
It was more from a general overview of the facility itself. I knew the square footage of what was going to be maintained for courts and what would be maintained for a jail. And that kind of set the tone of how we analyze the facility. All very general, though. Too many variables to get rather specific and say, you know, this is going to be to the dollar or dime. I apologize.
No, I'd say, I just wanted clarification on the scope of what the work was that was done out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I went about this a little differently. I had the auditor prepare me an audit of the costs of our current utility costs for both buildings. And in the process, was talking to Scott. He talked to someone from Amaresco and received a report on what your work had accomplished. And then I compared the current costs of utilities for the two buildings to what we appropriated for next year. And realized that we shouldn't have appropriated as much as we did, because there was over $100,000 discrepancy in the amount we appropriated and what will be needed based on your report from the experience since your change. So, even though I'm very negative on your approach to the program and the way it was funded, it looks like it's been successful. From that point of view, from this report, that's somewhat, a lot of variables, we'll say, I think, I feel assured that $415,000 would cover the cost of the new building and this building.
From my expert opinion, given on the, the building seems to be in very good condition on there, especially the building envelope, and especially if you are upgrading and putting energy efficiency equipment, controls on there. And with technology today, they can monitor that, you know, any alarms or anything like that in regards to temperatures and making sure that you're keeping your costs in line. You have that technology that's going to be installed there, which I think that will be very beneficial to an operation like that, which a jail's going to be, obviously, your biggest operation that you have in the county for your operations. And I think that, as you've seen, just with, utility rates are not going down. I mean, they're going to continue to escalate. So, from a county standpoint, I think that it's in your best interest to, you know, be strategic in regards to how you are, you know, building and operating your buildings, because it has a huge strain on your budgets.
I know that Commissioner Rigan has talked somewhat, even had someone come to the commissioner meeting to talk about solar. I've had some experience with that way back in the mid-'70s. I put solar hot water heaters in three homes. One of them was my own home. I would think that that would be a place where you, not, maybe if Amaresco gets involved, great, but for our QAW's sake, that would be a place where there'd probably be some cost savings on the long-term to put in, I call it domestic hot water, but I can't imagine with 300 to 500 people in a building that you're going to use a lot of hot water.
Well, you're going to use a lot of hot water.
And that's pretty much free once you get the collectors in install.
Exactly. And you're seeing a lot of more solar applications being applied, especially to a building such as a jail that's your largest energy user, with the electric costs and how they continue to escalate. This might be something that you should look at. At least get some ideas of what that impact might be here on your budgets.
My problem is I don't want to add cost to the.
Understand. Understand. We have to weigh, weigh it out.
Yeah. That's up to the commissioner. But I am somewhat, in general terms, correct that the cost of that building probably won't be much higher than what it is across the street.
I would think that it would be less.
Anyone else?
Thank you for your time. And if you do have any questions at all, I know Scott's got my cell number. Please reach out there. Thank you very much.
Hey, Mark, the sheriff's in the back row if you need to talk to him.
Just hope he doesn't take me with him.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Ecklerly, who is with Umbaugh and Associates. They are the financial consultant for the county on several different projects. The commissioners have requested Mr. Ecklerly to negotiate with the financer to come up with the projections on the cost of the financing, with and without a property tax backup, what it's going to cost in the Edit. Previously, Mr. Ecklerly had provided to the council and to the commissioners a analysis of the Edit plan, where it stands, where it goes, and, you know, is there money available? And I think Mr. Ecklerly will talk about that and discuss that today. He also has been requested by the commissioners to provide an analysis of the housing out of county prisoners. That was one thing the commissioners had requested, and he had a chance, and I believe I shared that with you. Does anybody need a copy of the analysis? Okay. I'll pass it out.
A little bit was exchanged since '16. I definitely handled the ratio.
Yes.
He gave you a couple lectures.
I probably did. I'm very good at this in school.
This is what you.
Yes, this is what. I just got to be thorough.
All right. Well, thank you, John. Good morning, everyone. As John mentioned, my name is Matt Ecklerly. I'm a principal with Umbaugh out of Indianapolis. We are the municipal advisor, financial advisor for the county on this transaction. As John mentioned, we were tasked with looking at two things primarily, and I'll focus on the smaller document first. That being the history of expenditures by the county on housing out of county, or housing county prisoners out of county at other facilities. And that is just a little two-pager, and the second page contains the content. We looked at the last five years plus the first half of 2018. We had been tasked with this late summer, so the 2018 figures run through July. And we had requested from the sheriff's department the expenditures in these areas over the past few years, and we just wanted to take that and put it in a user-friendly format, and then also calculate, on average, what has Delaware County been spending on housing prisoners out of county over the past five years. The average number of inmates you've had out of county the last five years has been about 20. And the average annual expenditures on those prisoners has been approximately $518,000, almost $519,000 a year. So, that was one of the concerns of the commissioners, was the amount of money that the county was spending on this program. And one of the goals of the new jail is to save on that $500-plus thousand a year that's been spent historically. Moving on to the larger analysis, which is also dated January 16th. As John mentioned, we have been working with the underwriter that was brought in as part of the our QAW BW construction team to serve as the agent for placing the proposed financing with an end lender. And we have been having conversations with them on topics primarily focused on the interest rate levels and the interest rate in terms that would be available to the county, whether or not a property tax backup was used as a supplemental security to the income tax, which would be the primary security pledge towards the payment of the lease obligations. Now, before I get into the nitty-gritty of the numbers, I just want to, I know we've had some conversations in the past on the concept of a property tax backup. I just want to reiterate that for the benefit of yourselves and for members of the audience who might not have been around for some of those conversations. What the commissioners are proposing is that this financing would be paid from the economic development income tax, or we now call it the lit economic development allocation. But what end lenders look for is what's the security that's available to us based on that? And as you're all familiar, income taxes are a volatile source of security or a source of revenue to the county. It's subject to the whims of the national economy, the local economy, so it fluctuates much more on a year-to-year basis. The bond market, the financial markets look at Indiana and look at property taxes as being the ultimate source of security that would be available to put towards a bond issue or a lease financing such as this, because property taxes, while they are subject to the tax caps, are well-defined, they're secured. You can set the property tax rate at what we call ad valorem, or at the value needed to make the debt payment. Now, in this circumstance, what we would look at is property taxes as purely a form of backup. So, if the income taxes were to fall short, then you would levy a property tax to fill the gap. It is not anticipated to be the actual source of payment. It's added as a marketing tool more than anything. You would have to see significant decreases in your income taxes, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a moment, in order to actually trigger the property tax backup. And I will add that this is a common tool that's used by communities, cities, towns, counties, statewide, to fund major capital projects, is if you are using a revenue source such as income taxes, that you also pledge property taxes as a backup. Just last year, I assisted both Decatur County and Tipton County on jail financings, and both of those financings, the source of security, the primary source of security was income taxes, but both of those counties elected to utilize a property tax backup as a marketing mechanism to get more favorable terms on those financings. So, now that we've gone into a little bit of what does a property tax backup actually mean, I want to get into a little bit more on, for Delaware County, what does it mean for this proposed lease transaction to fund the jail project? So, if you look at the larger analysis, there's a lot of detail contained within it, but in an attempt to somewhat simplify the conversation for a meeting and not spend all of our time in the weeds, though I'm happy to get into the weeds if people would like to, I wanted to hit the high points. And that would be the summary page that is page number two. Now, both of these scenarios, one and two contemplate that the economic development lit will be used as the primary source of security. And I want to emphasize that we are not looking at any sort of additional income tax rate to be levied on top of what's already being levied in Delaware County. This is operating 100% within the restrictions of your current revenue stream as it stands now, with no assumption of any increase in income taxes. So, scenario one assumes that there is that property tax backup in place, and scenario two assumes that you have purely what we would call a pure revenue obligation, the pure economic development, local income tax. Now, the primary difference that you'll see between the two is the term of the lease. We have been looking at this through the past year or so, as we've provided different financing illustrations, looking at 20 years of lease payments, but because there's a two-year construction period, you're not. The lender is providing for a, they have indicated, in what we call is an indicative interest rate based on conditions currently, and that would be subject to conditions at time of execution, and also their final credit review, but they have indicated rates of 3.9% in either scenario. So you would have the 3.9% for a 22-year term with a property tax backup, or for a 20-year term without a property tax backup. And as I mentioned, they will not exceed a 20-year term if there is no property tax backup in place. We have looked at the current edit revenue stream of the county and the budget that has been proposed by BW Construction back in, back in October, I believe it was, and their construction cost is about $42.1 million. So we have looked at both scenarios, and the current edit revenue stream, holding all else constant, could support a financing that fully funds that $42.1 million in either term, in either interest rate scenario. The difference would be the total interest expense to the county, the 22-year financing you, we estimate now would have total interest of just under $23.1 million. In the 20-year scenario with no property tax backup, it would be about $20.8 million in total interest. Where you really see an impact is on the, what we would call the backend, is after the payment of your obligations that are committed to you from edit, which would be, and I'm referring to your debt obligations. So we have accounted for this proposed lease financing, but also the outstanding financings that the county has that are payable from the economic development income tax. And if you go with the longer term, and I think about this as like when I've been evaluating whether or not I'm going to do a six-year or a five-year loan for a car. With the longer term, you have lower annual payments, but it costs more in interest over time to fund the same amount. The shorter term, you're going to have those higher annual payments, because you're paying off that principal faster, you're going to have less interest, because you're paying off that principal faster, but you're going to have less cash flow available on the backend to fund the other projects that you want to use your edit for on an ongoing basis, on more of a cash basis. So if you were to pursue the property tax backup and the full 22-year lease term, you're looking at about $1.2 million of edit revenues after obligations that would be available for other project priorities of the county. That's all of your normal pay-as-you-go expenditures that the commissioners use edit for, including helping some of the smaller communities that participate in the pool of program. If you were to pursue the shorter financing term, we're estimating you would have about $940,000 of annual edit available for other projects. So the difference is about $260,000 to the county in what would be available for other projects. Now, obviously, you could look at a shorter term with the property tax backup and see what kind of interest rate you get there. This is just setting out the scenarios as we have them right now. But those are the key points that I wanted to address as I presented this information to you, in terms of delineating the difference between with property tax backup and without property tax backup. And really, if you look at that edit revenues remaining, that's your cushion that's available to the county in either scenario, where if you were to have a property tax backup in place and utilize that 22-year financing term, you would have to lose $1.2 million out of your edit revenues before that property tax backup would be triggered. So that's the amount of play that you have there for, you know, if the economy takes a downturn, you start seeing a reduction in revenues, you would have to see a reduction of approximately $1.2 million. And just for your frame of reference, your certified distribution for 2019 is about $4.6 million. So you would have to lose about a quarter of your annual distribution.
I got a question. The illustrative annual editor revenue remaining, is that after the, the other bonds drop off in 2021? If that's, these figures after 2021?
This accounts for, in the early years, it accounts for those existing bonds being in place, and on the tail end, as those bonds roll off, we wrap this financing around it, so the annual payments on all lease or bond obligations would be leveled throughout. So that $1.2 million, that $940,000 is after the payment of all debts. Yeah. Are there any other questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Would you mind going through the project cost and funding, just to explain why that amount is 4.2 instead of, or, excuse me, that'd be nice, 42.17 instead of 46.98?
Sure. So what we have, the question for the benefit of those in the audience, we're looking at a total illustrative project costs, including soft costs, of just under $46.1 million. And so what we're looking at is $42.1 million for the raw construction of the facility, and the folks from RQAW can get into the details there. We have nearly $3 million in what we call capitalized interest, which is the interest that would be owed on the financing during that time period where the lease is outstanding, but you can't make lease payments because the facility is not available for occupancy. The holders of the debt still expect to be paid, regardless of Indiana law, on lease payments, so we call that capitalized interest in construction. And the county is contemplating using TIF funds from a couple different allocation areas to fund that, so that's not financed, that would be paid from cash upfront. Additionally, there are fees associated with the financing and professionals associated with that transaction, which would include the underwriter Mezaro that I referred to earlier, and then the county's professionals that are advising them on this transaction. Those are assumed amounts right now, that total, around $1 million. You know, obviously, that will be fine-tuned as we approach closing on the transaction, and we would expect those amounts to come in lower rather than higher than what's illustrated in this, in this analysis here.
Is that 0.75%? In lay terms, is that like a discount point that you would have on a mortgage?
It's roughly equitable. We call it, if it's not a placement agent fee, if this were a public sale of the bonds, we call it an underwriter's discount. It's the, kind of the points that go over to the folks who, I don't want to call it in mortgage terms, originated it, but they're the ones who place the debt with a, with the third party who owns it in the end.
So these, these folks that are actually loaning the money are going out to third parties to cure the bonds?
Yeah, so Mezaro is not going to be the end purchaser of this. They have identified an institution that will ultimately own this lease obligation of the county.
When they do bonds?
They're the underwriter. So, yeah, when you do the bonds, they, Mezaro, if this, they're an underwriter. Just in this transaction, they serve more as a, we call them a placement agent, because it's a private transaction.
Now, it's true, the 20 years is stretching it, but would the interest rate be lower if it was lesser years?
On the property tax backup scenario? Logic would dictate yes, that typically you will see a lower interest rate if you have a shorter financing term. I've not pressed Mezaro on that topic yet, but if that's something that the county wants to explore, I'll have that conversation with the folks at Mezaro, and they can relay what they're seeing in the market for a two-year, shorter term on a property tax backup scenario.
I think it'd be worth looking into. Basically, on the lower cost. I mean, when you're talking 50% of the total cost, just cost of money.
I understand.
The rates there.
You'd mentioned there was a cost involved for attorneys and bonding and all that stuff, I guess. Is that, that's not, is that in the, tell me where that's at?
That's baked into the allowance for lease issuance costs and contingencies line item. That covers all of those soft costs.
Okay, I thought you said that was around $1 million.
Well, I was combining that together with the placement agent fee.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. And is that the, is that, other than interest, is that the total cost of paying financing on this?
That's what we're looking at right now, that $46,989,600. Obviously, numbers will be firmed up as we get closer to closing.
Understood.
That's round numbers, $1 million. Soft cost, that's, kind of like in lay terms, it's no value, you give nothing in front of it, except someone assuming some responsibility.
Now, on to, I guess, a couple of questions on this. The interest amount that's associated with this is only during the building phase of this?
The capitalized interest?
Right.
Correct, yeah, that's just during that period of construction.
Next page, show us what the cost is going to be over the term.
Yes, the, what I'd call the comparison schedule. Yes, page five or page eight, both illustrate, this is just, when you're making the actual lease payments, that illustrative lease rentals column, $63.3 million in the scenario one, in scenario two, we're looking at $61 million and change.
So, based on your amortization schedule, you're starting out with a $43,110, you're including those, that $1 million of soft costs in the borrowing?
Correct.
But the cost of interest during construction, the commissioners are talking about other sources, so they won't be causing additional interest?
That's correct.
It'll be pay-as-you-go?
That's correct.
I wonder why they can't consider that other million as pay-as-you-go?
I can't speak to their thought process there.
And I guess under, under this scenario, I guess this is, we're lack of a better term, this is what we called it a few months ago, at the worst-case scenario, we're kind of there, as far as the amount of money that's involved in this. And I would assume that that would continue to cause us negative amortization over the first part of this loan until those bonds are paid off?
How do you mean?
Well, from what you, from what you had discussed earlier, and I know we had a meeting months ago on that, that basically, and I think you've already answered that question, but just for clarification, we're, what you're showing us is spreading out the cost over the term of the entire loan, and is the payment going to be the same in the first few years?
Sure.
We're just spreading that initial cost where we're having to pay the other bonds until they're paid off?
Exactly.
Over the term of the loan.
Exactly, yes, the outstanding bonds have what we call parity provisions, where if you want any future obligations payable from your economic development income tax to have the same priority of payment as the outstanding obligations, you have to maintain a minimum coverage level, and that minimum coverage level in those documents is 125%. So we've taken that into account here, where we have to, as I mentioned earlier, we have to wrap it around the outstanding debt to account for that, maintain your minimum coverage under those covenants. If you didn't have that debt in place, you could pay off principal faster, it's still maintaining 125%, and we'd be looking at different numbers. But yes, this is kind of, I guess you could call it a worst case, where you have to wrap around those outstanding until they're fully matured, and then you can put everything you want into this financing.
Okay, I'd ask a question to John about the, I don't know whether Sue's going to cover this, are you going to present it?
I plan to just be here to answer questions.
Okay. We had, earlier, we had talked about the different financing options that were available, and I'd asked John if he could revisit that today, so I don't know if that's part of the presentation, or if you want to answer that now, answer it later, I'm fine with it.
Well, we discussed the financing options, which primarily boiled down to with and without a property tax backup. I mean, it was always the commissioner's position that edit funds were to be used for this without imposing a new tax or increasing taxes. I mean, that was the commissioner's position all along. So edit was the proposal that the commissioners had looked at. The commissioners hadn't looked at the proposal of the council imposing a jail construction tax. They didn't look at that option, because that would be imposing a new tax on the citizens of Delaware County. So the commissioners were banking on, or not banking on, but looking at using edit funds for this build-operate-transfer type agreement. That's what the commissioners were focused on.
Well, initially, there were three options presented to the council members for financing this project, and I just wanted to revisit what those three were and why we couldn't go the other two.
Well, the other two required the...
One of them I know exceeded bonding limits.
Right.
One there, so...
Right, it exceeded the bonding limit, the other one was imposition of a, of a new tax, and this was the, the third option, was using the edit funds that existed, provided that there were sufficient edit funds. That was the analysis that was initially done by Mr. Eckery several months ago, was to determine the, whether there would be sufficient edit funds to finance this project. He made that determination, that analysis back last October, presented it to the commissioners in their meeting, that, I think it was October, November, that there was that sufficient, or probably even before that, sufficient edit financing that was available, which wouldn't increase taxes, so that's what the commissioners went forward on.
Are you referring to the traditional, like a GO bond versus the BOT agreement?
I'm referring to the three options that were presented way back when. I believe you presented them, but I could be wrong, it could have been Matt that presented...
We talked about, you know, we could have done, the commissioners, from a policy perspective, chose to go this BOT route. We could have done our traditional GO bond, we could have done a different kind of lease financing. I think we went through those different things, but from a policy perspective, the commissioners felt strongly going the build-operate-transfer route in order to avoid change orders in the future. Is that the conversation?
Yeah, I think so. Back, there was a reason, and I believe it was because we were above our bonding limit, and I guess, why is that? I mean, we don't, the county doesn't have that much debt, is that because?
You're still limited, and Matt, sorry, Matt would know those numbers better, what your limit is on your general obligation debt. To not, if you exceeded your general obligation debt limit, then we would have done a traditional lease financing, where again, we would be selling bonds. But with this way, we are not selling any bonds, we're just signing a lease. And I think the commissioners chose this route, again, because of the flexibility it gave them with the BOT agreement to do the RFP, you know, as we've been through several times to get where we are historically, because of the change order issue. They wanted to have a guaranteed price and be locked in at that.
Are these folks taxing them for the loan?
The funds?
Funds, there's $4,343 million. The one company that's...
Misero?
Somebody's selling bonds, right?
Misero?
Misero.
Misero's making a placement, but not releasing them.
They're placing them, yes.
Right, okay, well, so...
There will be a tax-exempt obligation, is that what you're...
That's what I'm asking.
I just, I think it's important that we keep in mind, all the county's doing is signing a lease. We're not issuing...
I understand, I just was curious, whether, based, I was looking at the tax rate.
The 3.9 is probably tax-exempt rate.
Yeah, I believe it is a tax-exempt financing, and I will just note right now, just for everyone's reference, that the gap between taxable and tax-exempt rates right now is not that large. But, yeah, I believe this is a tax-exempt financing from the legal perspective and then the end purchaser perspective as well.
I guess, I don't know if you answered that question or not, but I'm still back to the bonding limit.
Sure.
Why, why does, why did we exceed the bonding limit?
Sure.
Because it's figured out of the, what the city of Muncie has bonded to, or is that...
No, it's based, your constitutional debt limit is one-third, or 2% of, one-third of the certified net assessed value of Delaware County, and that's Delaware County as a whole. I don't have the numbers right handy, and I apologize for that, but the total cost of this project and the financing that would be needed exceeded the available debt capacity you had under that debt limit. I believe your available debt limit was in the teens of millions, and if you'd like, I believe your available debt was, limit was in the, the teens of millions, um, and if you'd like, I can look that up when I get back to the office and follow up on that.
Actually, that's all I was looking for, I mean, I remember there was a reason, I just don't remember that one.
That's not uncommon for any county.
Yeah.
But your, your debt limit is set by the constitution, it's the two percent, this is kind of a squirrely formula, but...
When they change the true tax value, and, yeah, that's why it's, uh, one-third, two percent, but, yeah.
You can answer it, thank you.
Just, just for the record, Mr. Brooks, you made a comment earlier about, uh, we wouldn't, all of these taxpayer with bonds, that they chose to go with the lease direction.
It wouldn't create a, a separate tax rate. If there were, I mean, this is a, signing a lease, and this is a placement of a...
But the, but the local paycheck tax, what I call them, paid for by every individual in this county that draw the paycheck in this county.
That's correct, it is. The, the...
That's the money we're using, right?
The local income taxes is, is that, and, but this financing doesn't increase that. It's within the capacity of what the county receives annually.
And, so, everybody, try to help everybody understand this too, with property tax backup, with the monies that the commissioners spend out of the edit plan, those, uh, those projects that we have bonded prior to, that we have bonds, they're not only obligated to remain on pro, remain on a, uh, the projects, they have to complete those projects, because those projects, as you see in the edit plan, are bridges, infrastructure projects, those are all funded by bonds, and are all backed up by kind of taxpayer dollars. We've not used them, and we've not had to go there, so the commissioners, I'm sure they understand that every project that's on there now, that's the, the bond allocation for the bonds that we bonded for those projects, because that was what secured those bonds. So those projects will not only be completed, but then this build-operate-transfer agreement will then add on to the additional revenues that we've seen in the edit plan money since the city increased its Lloyd, what, three, four years ago?
A couple of years ago, I'll say that. Yes, the, the obligations that the county has presently under the edit, I think are all backed up with the property taxes?
Uh, one of the two outstanding bonds is backed with property taxes.
Bridges.
Yeah, I believe that's the case, yeah, I believe that's the case.
Right, and there will be, the largest one goes off in two years, I, I believe, the nine...
Twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah.
Correct.
By the time this is up and construction is completed.
When is the second one completed, twenty-thirty or something?
Twenty... Twenty thirty-three.
Twenty thirty-three.
Now, I have done some research, or some other communities have done the bond, bond agreements as well. Is this mainly the reason why they can do that too, without pulling out the taxes, raising taxes, going into their added monies, and paying for that that way, or explain why the build-operate-transfer agreement? I mean, I know why our specific, is because we don't, commissioners didn't wanna raise taxes, or ask us to raise taxes to fund the project. Is that similar, the same reason why you're, you're seeing some of these build-operate-transfer agreements?
The primary purpose and, and primary benefit of the build-operate-transfer is to set a certain price for the construction project. It's a price that the developer and the county, the county or the entity agree upon, and that's the price. Then the, um, the risk of loss, if there is a rainstorm, if there's some other problem that occurs, or there's unknowns that aren't known, then that builder, the developer, takes that risk of loss in there, on their side of the agenda, to finish the project for a fixed cost, as opposed to the old traditional method, which was, here's a price, and then you can have change orders up to twenty percent of the, of the cost to increase the, the overall construction process and costs. So the build-operate-transfer, the primary purpose is to fix a, fix a cost, and that cost is set in stone, unless the government entity wants to change it, and wants to add, subtract, whatever, but that's a fixed cost. The financing for it is traditionally financed through either lit or some other method that the county has to pay those lease payments, but it's a long-term obligation, that's either twenty, twenty-two, or twenty-five years, however, whatever the financing terms are. But primarily, the benefit is the, is the certain cost, right, Sue?
Yeah, I mean, they're really two different areas. I mean, using the BOT, we could've done it, we could've still financed it, issued bonds, issued, you could've raised the jail tax, we could've done it, financed it any, anyway. So people make the policy decision, as the commissioners did, to use that, or as John said, so that they know what, what they're getting, you know, they have a turnkey operation. The financing side is totally separate. That method was not chosen so that we didn't have to raise taxes, because other communities could still use the BOT and raise taxes to pay for it, not use edit, you know, use property taxes, or as I said, enact the jail tax to do it. We could have gone the traditional, you know, bid out, all that, and still use edit and not raise taxes. So they're really two separate decisions that were made, um, by the commissioners, so...
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I was just trying to help.
Yeah.
Spread that, or why we're in a build-operate-transfer agreement, because some people ask why.
Yeah, it's really not related to the payment source.
Trying to get, somebody, you know, educate someone over here.
So what the council has in front of them are two ordinances, and one of those is the alternative, one is the approval of the lease, uh, which the commissioners have approved it on their side. The other one is the decision on the financing, whether with or without a property tax backup. This is a first reading, just for introduction only, the final would be, I think, in your February meeting. One thing that the commissioners are committed to doing is making sure that the costs of the operation are as economically viable as possible, and that's what they look forward in this proposal to the council. The council can decide how they wish to, whether they wish to have the property tax backup or, or not. I don't think the commissioners are making any particular, let's see, hold on, I don't think they're making any particular preference, one way or the other. There is a savings on interest of two, three billion dollars, um, which was a surprise to the commissioners, because it'd always been believed that the interest rate would be different with property tax backup, without a property tax backup. Here, the interest rate remains the same, just the term of the agreement is, one is longer, one is shorter, and that's where you get the savings on the, on the interest. So that's what the commissioners are asking for the council to consider in this, in this process. Uh, with regard, I promised at, at the opening that I would answer Mr. Quakka Bush's question about the available space. There is some additional space that's, that is out there that's not being used. One of those possible uses is to bring community corrections, they still have a lease, um, at the current facility. There's space that's available, it's not being built out for them just yet. The other part is, there were some, during the courts of this, uh, there was discussion with the courts that the legislature may add a sixth circuit court to the Delaware County because of the caseload, and that is a three, four-year process at least. Uh, I don't believe it's in this year's budget, because it's a two-year budget that the state passes, and there would be, there's a possibility that it could be added in the budget in twenty-twenty-one, so there should be space available, um, and there is space available to do that. There's also space available for the sheriff to add additional programs, add some housing space if it becomes necessary, that sort of thing. The building has that much flexibility that it could, um, it could meet the needs for the future, as opposed to being locked in what we have presently, so that's an answer to your question.
Well, the last document you sent to us was, uh, was this one right here.
Right, that was a request of...
And it, it includes community corrections in it.
Oh, did it?
Yeah, you take that ten thousand, seven forty-six out, and it makes my question bigger, because that means less, uh, space used.
Well, it's being allocated, but it's not being built out as part of the...
I understand that part.
For the process.
But what concerns me, and I'm gonna be very blunt about this, uh, I'm old-school government. I believe that, uh, government's here to provide public safety and service to the community, that the community can't handle itself. And, uh, I don't like the idea of, of commissioners having this extra space to be there available for who knows what kind of program might come along and obligate the county government to operate facilities that we don't need to be involved in. And there are a lot of those rumors and discussions going on right now with the opiates and the drugs and all that, and, uh, unfortunately, that's a social problem, not a government problem. The government needs a bigger jail to protect people, people from, now, this is my opinion, folks, but I'm not here to debate it, I'm just telling you that I'm concerned about the extra space in this building that won't be used, based on what we've seen in these booklets. It's just extra space, it's more than they need, and that's my main obstacle, so I'm not sure your answer is sufficient to me to tell me what they're gonna do with that extra space, how they're gonna keep it from being a burden.
One thing I can answer on is, the space is there for future need, if, in, if an event, there is a need for it. And the only way that that space is gonna be utilized is if the county council approves the appropriation for that particular space. All of these requests, all of these potentials for, uh, new programs, new employees, extra spaces, all that stuff, all that stuff has to come in front of the county council. So that would be within your control. Commissioners can make a request, the courts can make a request, the sheriff can make a request, uh, but it's always ultimately back to the county council to approve all that. The space is there in case it's needed, and in case the county council, whoever's on the council at that time, uh, approves that request. If you don't approve that request, then the space isn't used. I think that pretty boils it down pretty simple, is you're still the gatekeeper of the finances, uh, you're still gatekeeper of the money. The commissioners can have all the space that they want to, but unless and until the council appropriates and approves the, the use of the money to fill those spaces, then it's gonna remain spaces available for future consideration.
Well, I, I understand, and, and I agree with exactly what you said, however, um, if that space is available, government seems to find a way to fill it up.
Only if the council allows it.
I understand that, but based on, on the calculations that you guys provided, the total of, uh, the new square footage comes to ninety-three, four sixty-seven, if you take that away from the existing building, it leaves a hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet and change.
That's true.
And that concerns me. I mean, we're gonna leave space in this building, and we're gonna leave a whole lot of space in that building, that, you know, we're gonna, even if the space is vacant, we're still gonna have to, to some extent, heat pool and maintain it, uh, over a period of time. And I think that's where I disagree with, um, some of the cost projections seem to be on the very low side, um, of things, based on what we know. I mean, we know that's an older building, um, you know, we're adding another forty-three thousand, uh, square feet of, of new construction out there, according to the plan that's presented, and and I've got some currents, concerns with it, and I think that's why, you know, we had, um, indicated several times that we would like to meet in a joint meeting and, and try and discuss some of these things with the commissioners, and to this point, we haven't had an acceptance for that, and here we are today, so...
It's the, the position of the commissioners that there is extra space out there, they understand that, they're, right now, the county is housing some departments outside of these two structures that exist. It's anticipated that, once this project is up and going, that those departments would then be moved into county-owned facilities, so the county would stop paying rent and/or option payments, or I think the health department is one of those. That is, that was moved outside this county several years ago, outside the county building several years ago. There would be more than sufficient space, once this project goes forward, for the county health department to move back in, and the county could then stop having to make the monthly payments for the health department.
Yeah, and I, and I agree and understand that, and I think that was one of the good selling points to this, to this program when we first discussed it, um, back then, with, um, community corrections, but now that community corrections is, and I, and I think I would like you guys to go over those changes that were made from the original proposal to, to now, because I think they're significant. Regarding the pool area, um, regarding the community corrections build-out and the costs involved there, um, you know, we were kinda, I feel like led to believe that if we purchased this building, that would reduce from the, the price, um, four million dollars, because that was what allocated to the building, so if you could go over those changes from the original, um, usability study, which, you know, honestly, I, I don't know whether we're gonna get anything else yet today, as far as what these specifications are, um, for the project. I'm hoping that that was gonna be presented today, but I don't know whether that's on your agenda or not.
Well, the, the purpose of, of this presentation was to discuss the financing and the, the financing, as Mr. Hughes said, the, the, the numbers with the county council, because that's within your bailiwick, are the numbers for that. The commissioners had a design committee, the design committee worked with the developer and the various offices, the offices gave their absolute best wish list for everything that they wanted, uh, and then there was a price that was associated with that, and then there was cuts made to, to that. One of those was community corrections. Uh, community corrections is a entity that is funded a hundred percent from money outside of property tax revenue, it's funded by the Department of Corrections in their facility, and in their funds, which goes to community corrections, and the county is a pass-through for those employees, they're on our insurance and all that sort of stuff. But the community corrections was outside, they had a lease, space was allocated for them, but it wasn't built out, and that was a cost savings, for it not being built out. It was supposed that, in the, um, design committee meetings, that once community corrections finishes their lease, then they could look to the Department of Corrections for some funds in which to help build that out, which wouldn't be county funds. It would be Department of Corrections funds that would help build that out. That's, that's a possibility, but that's five years down the road. The other part was, some offices wanted more space than they really, really needed, so those were changes that were made, and you have the most recent version, which dropped the, the overall construction price down about three or four million dollars. Uh, and that was the whole purpose of it, was to get within the amount that was doable and financed through the edit plan. That was the number that the commissioners were looking at, that's the number that the commissioners were, were comfortable with, that Mr. Ecklerly had provided to them, was that it met the edit plan amounts, based on the projection he had done last year. And that's what has been presented to the council for their review, uh, is that it's within the edit plan, it's fin, it's able to be financed, it's able to be constructed. The commissioners are fully, um, are fully believe that the council will exercise the appropriate discretion and, um, decision-making process if and when other areas want to be expanded into. Commissioners can make requests, but it's still the council that's funded. So if there's extra spaces that are available, it's, can be used if the council appropriates it, and so that, that's a function of the council, and if there are trepidations about filling up that space, then it's up to the council to either fill it or not fill it, when the, if these programs expand. So, I mean, that's, that's where the commissioners are, they've made a presentation, they, they've taken the, um, information that the council's given them at different times, was to live within their means, they have that, there's no new taxes that's going to be imposed for this particular project, and it can be financed through the edit plan and still leave money available in the plan for other economic development activities. And this meets the, uh, the criteria the commissioners had set forth at the very beginning, was to live within their means, and that's what they've done. And they are now asking that the council take a look at that, weigh the options, and approve the financing in this. It's a, it, it's a financing that is, you know, is something that is within the financial means of Delaware County. The commissioners don't wanna have to build a new jail, they don't wanna have to house ex-prisoners, but they're spending more than half a million dollars a year on those out-of-county prisoner costs.
Well, and I've heard it said over the period of this discussion, that, uh, if, if that's the case, we can do it for fifty years.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Well, I would ask you a question about this. The, the, the ordinance has a, a, a limit not to exceed of three million, seven hundred thousand a year. Based on this amortization schedule, it, it won't ever reach that amount.
Correct. We, the, the ordinance is always drafted with a, with a, with a ceiling rather than a basement, so that... that in the event something untoward happens, then there's that flexibility in it, but the numbers that have been presented to the council say that it won't exceed that number.
I mean, you know, with the square footage difference in this building, we could move all of Delaware County's government out into that building, and that's, that's a concern for down the road, I mean, we have to, we can't just think about whether we can build this and then not go on from there, we've got to think about this as, as we can, we can, we can build this and continue to maintain and operate it, and I'm not suggesting for a minute that we move everything out there, that's a commissioner's decision, but I, again, you know, I've stated this all along, I'd like to see this done, done for less and figure out a way to utilize that space. The build-out that I see in the, in the plan right now seems to use a lot of space, but if we have to go back and do something later, we're going to have additional costs involved if we have to move that configuration around.
And that will be a consideration for the council when and if that ever occurs, and that's something that the council can control?
On this space thing, I'm going to ask our QAW, has there been any study or scenario where part of this excess space might be adapted to more cell space if we have the same experience with this facility as we did there? One we had.
Yeah, I'll follow him.
Again, for the record, Pete Peterson, RQAW, I also have with me here Eric Wefflin, our Director of Architecture, and Dustin Frye, our Director of Construction, I think these questions are getting into some areas where these guys can answer this question a little bit more effectively.
Thank you, as Pete mentioned, Eric Wefflin with RQAW, I'd like to point out that the request that was made in regards to the table that you have there was a space comparison, that is not a complete accounting of all the square footage in the building. The spaces that are available for future expansion, as was mentioned, is just dedicated to the potential of a court being added to the pool space now, that will just be shelled and not utilized, and then the space that's been allocated for community corrections. So there's not, it's closer to probably 30,000, I don't have the total with me right now, but the space available for future expansion is not 100,000 square feet, it's probably closer to 30,000, and would only be dedicated for those purposes. One of the spaces that we identified for future jail and sheriff's needs would be that pool space, because of its proximity to the detention areas, to the programming space, to medical, to the laundry, et cetera, so the support functions that would...
What are you going to, what's in the plan to do with that swimming pool right now? I mean, how are you going to mothball it in the process?
Dustin Frye's the construction guy, so he can speak to that.
Again, I'm Dustin Frye, represent QAW Construction, and the pool is currently mothballed as it is, there's some existing HVAC units that serve that area, we would be building a corridor through that pool that would maintain access from interior jail operations to the existing building, to the new housing pod that would be constructed as part of this project, but the pool would maintain how it is currently today, and it's in a, it's in a mothball state, and would be easily converted in the future to additional housing or program space to fit the jail needs as it would grow and the need would be required.
Do you guys have that in committee, there was a cost breakdown sheet of what was listed, I believe, as options that were originally proposed, but now listed as options, including fencing property and parking lot renovations and things, do you have a copy of that sheet, or can you get us a copy of that sheet?
Yeah, I can get you a copy of that sheet, I don't have one with us today, it was just a list of ideas and scope items that are not currently included in the overall project, but that would be easily added if funds were available to the project inclusive of potentially building that pool out to add additional housing.
Again, I think, and Scott, if I understand your question correctly, I think we were tasked with the fact of delivering a jail and the operations the commissioners asked for at a set price, which was delivered by Umba through the availability of edit funds. So we had that cap, and we needed to look at what could be deliverable with that scope from that money, and that's what was delivered, so I think what you're asking for is everything would be over and above that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I mean, the cost of the project, as you guys have presented it, is different than the cost of the project that we discussed back in the feasibility study, and there are things that we will have to pay for later if we want those, and those are going to add to the cost of the project at some point in time. How they get paid for, you know, I don't have a clue as to where that money's going to come from.
I believe we came up with the original cost of the feasibility study, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, was right around $45 million, that's a number that rings true in the very initial, and this is going back a year ago.
Yeah, I've got the, right in front of me, $46,587.43 was the high side, you figured the high and the low side, but in that, $4 million for the building acquisition, which we can take away because we purchased the building, so that adds to the total cost of the project, not 4 million, it adds what we, what we paid for it back there, but the pool at that time was configured in that project, now it's out, so it adds to the total cost of the project. If you, you know, if you take everything away from the project, and then we have to pay for it later, then it becomes, becomes an issue, is how is it going to get paid for down the road?
With...
Those are concerns that I think county council needs to address.
Just to talk about the pool specifically, when we were doing the study with the pool, we were trying to figure out the number of beds that would be required, and at the very early stages within the study, we thought the pool was necessary for the amount of beds that the commissioners had asked for, and we were able to put those beds in other areas of the project to keep the, maintain the bed count and not have to do the pool at this time. So, yes, we took money out of the pool, but those funds went into other areas of the project, including the gymnasium and the new housing pod, to maintain the bed count, as well as give the county square footage that could be utilized in the future for additional housing.
Well, I kind of, my thought was the same, same thing down the road, however, my analysis of what the cost would be if we didn't do that is different than what we're seeing today. My assumption would be, and I believe that was somewhere around $4.7 million to build out that space, that that would reduce our total obligation by that amount, rather than, you know, the build-out has exceeded cost estimates, I guess, is by, by a pretty significant margin.
As I said...
If you look at the, I mean, yes, you were able to bring the project in at $46 million, but we also gave away some things that were initially in the feasibility study, and that's a concern.
They were given away, I think they were just reallocated in different spots, they were moved, I mean, that's what Eric just said, they were moved, but the cost is still there.
The cost is still there, but the cost is, is not inside this project, it's sometime down the road.
No, it's in this project, no, it's in this project, right Eric?
The pool construction is, Dustin, the pool construction is not in this project, it will be mothballed. The approximately 100 beds is what could have been built in that pool, is now being built in the gym and in the current housing pod, so you still have the same bed count, whether we built those 100 beds in there and only had 400 elsewhere, the cost to build those 100 beds is still in the project, we just decided and were able to design more efficiently where those beds could actually go to maintain existing space, to fully utilize existing space, as well as the full new addition, and have that square footage, so your, your cost is being paid for, it just doesn't show it in the pool line item, it's now in the gym and the housing pod.
As well as giving you guys additional options as you move forward, if the capacity is needed, you could go to the pool rather than having to go to a whole new housing pod, which there also is room for on the, on the site, so again, everything's being delivered that was promised for in the feasibility study.
Well, I think that's what the, with that pool area, it's pretty significant to tear that out, and, I mean, that was, I guess, if you're trying to reduce the cost of the project, that's an easy place to go for now, but at some point in time, you know, something may have to be done with that portion of the building, and that price is going to have to be paid.
That would be additional scope to the original project, yes.
At some point in time, and, I mean, it's a big project, I mean, there's a lot to think about here, there's a lot of concern, I know we've all spent a lot of time on this and some sleepless, sleepless nights over it as well, so, I mean, we're just trying to make sure that we, we figure out a way to, and like I say, I mean, we've, we've attempted to meet with the commissioners to try and discuss some of these things, and that's been not happening, obviously, but that.
Anything else from the council?
Yeah, you have a couple more, anybody else got any questions? From the... The BOT agreement itself, does it require any kind of, I already know the answer to this question, but I, I think I do, but I want to reiterate that to get it on the record, does it require any kind of a referendum to pass it?
No.
No.
It doesn't need congressional, does it need referendum?
No.
No, it does not.
Is, is this option remonstrable to the taxpayers, is like, hey, we don't like this, can they remonstrate it?
It's not a remonstrance, there is an objection period.
Okay, can you, can you discuss what that is?
If, if the council approves the project, and again, that, it takes two readings because it is an ordinance, so it wouldn't be done till after the council, if they do adopted it on second reading, then there are two different notices, public notices that will be published in the newspaper, which will give the public an opportunity to object.
Do you know what the parameters of those are?
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't remember the timelines off the top of my head, I think one of them is at least 30 days, though, that they have.
How do you object?
I know one of them is at least 30 days, the other one, I believe, is shorter.
How does the public object, what's the mechanism?
There would be, again, there's two different statutes, I'm talking off the top of my head, but I believe there's a petition filed with the auditor, which would then go to the Department of Local Government Finance, and you have to demonstrate that, you know, that the, the project is not needed, was not necessary, was done in such a way, that the information will be in the notice.
Okay, any other council members, if you have anything to say, I'd say that then concludes our informational part of this meeting, I would like to have a request for a break of 10 minutes, when we come back, I'm going to ask for consideration of ordinance 2019-006, am I correct, Bill? Yeah. And, and that's up to the council, then, if you want to put this on the table for discussion. Fair enough?
Okay.
Thank you, audience, for your patience, while we had our discussion, as Scott originally talked, we tried our best, recommendation of our attorney, to have a forum that would be like this, only separate from a regular meeting, and it did not happen, so we had to use this as a genre, I guess, 10 minutes, we'll be back here in 20 minutes. Waiting on our recorder, if Scott wanted to make a clarification of maybe a misconception of what he said about something.
Yeah, that's relevant. Say something or clarify something, I, I made some statements about some meetings with some commissioners to, to date, and, and we have been meeting throughout the entire process over the last year, there was just what we thought was an initial, or a kind of an end game, publicly.
Do you want to make sure this is recorded?
What's that?
Are you wanting to make sure what you're saying is being recorded?
I think, are we back in session?
I don't know if it recorded.
Okay, let me know when you're ready. Go ahead. Yeah, I was, it was pointed out to me during the break that, that I may have somehow indicated that, that we hadn't met with the commissioners, and that's, that's not, that's not true, we have met with the commissioners, they have put a, multiple times over the period of the last year, it was just a, a meeting that we requested here at the, at the end, which we're kind of taking care of today, that was in question on that, but I can tell you this, the commissioners have worked extremely hard on this project, along with all the people that are involved, Umba, RQAW, to deliver what we've got today, and I just want to state that for the record, in case there was any misconception, or if I said, I may have said something that made everybody think that we did not meet with the commissioners, but that's simply not true.
Because I have a notebook full of papers here, and two books that the commissioners have presented to me, sort of back then, okay, we're ready to go then, Denise?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hughes, I'm going to yield to your advice here as to how to proceed. Okay, as Mr. Brooke indicated, the three ordinances are available for introduction only, they will be considered for final passage at your February meeting, again, my recommendation is first to consider the introduction of ordinance 2019-006, which is the ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the Delaware County Council concerning a determination to enter into a proposed build, operate, transfer lease agreement. This ordinance recites that the commissioners have determined that there is a need for the jail and justice center, that they have prepared drawings, plans, and estimates of cost and specifications for the project, that they have held a public hearing, which was held in this room in December, I believe they've determined that it's in the best interest to proceed, and have approved a form of a lease, and they are asking the county council to ratify that by this ordinance, so again, my, my recommendation is that you entertain a motion to introduce ordinance 2019-006.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2019-006.
Motion by Larry.
I'll second that.
Second by Jane. Now we're ready for discussion, and this is a point where I would welcome anyone from the audience, if you would like to step forward, state your name, your address, and as you can see, this is time-consuming, a lot of you want to speak, try to hold your remarks to a minute or two, I think, please try not to be redundant, once you've said what you feel like, and if you're in the audience and you want to say the same thing, just accept the fact that someone else has already said it, is that fair enough? Go ahead, sir.
Mitch, I have 685-01, North Yellow Stone Drive, three points I want to make, first is, Mr. President, you called yourself an old-school government person, then you know old-school government is built around a number of principles, one of which being separation of powers. Mr. Brooke rightly reminded this group that it is your purview, and your control, and your decision on expenditures, in fact, I heard him say that more than once, I've talked with some of you who, who have said, it's only our job to make sure the money is there. I've looked at the state statute, I don't see anything in there about that, you've, we know, separation of power, powers. The other thing I would also remind, or talk about, is the principle of democracy is interacting with the public. Mr. Alexander pointed out there was a hope of there being a joint public hearing, I'm amazed, simply amazed, that there have been repeated requests from the public and leaders in our community, which have been rejected and denied for a public hearing, that is the simple and most basic of ways to interact with this public, and it is not unreasonable. Due diligence is more than studies, although studies are important, due diligence is talking to the public and giving them an opportunity to speak, and yes, these meetings happen, but they happen when people work. Hold a public hearing, I ask this group, I, I really just beg this group, not only because I oppose, no, more importantly, this is about the spirit of local government. If you say yes, without so much of a public hearing, you're telling the public... If you say yes without so much of a public hearing, you're telling the public that they are not partners in the problem-solving process, but that local government sees them as a problem to be solved. People deserve, people deserve to believe in their government, and to not give them an opportunity to speak, as been requested by members of this council, by leaders of this community, and by everyday citizens, is a travesty. And I believe in the process, and I hope that you do too. Please exercise your constitutionally given separation of powers, and require at very least a public hearing before saying yes. That is both reasonable, fair, and well within the tenets of democracy, and well within your tenets, as state statute, of what you can do as county council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I just want to be clear again. What I was asking, or what we had asked for, was not a public hearing. It was a, it was a meeting between the commissioners and the councils, and that would not have, that was the request that I believe council made, was not a, not for a public hearing, but for a meeting.
Public meeting.
Yeah, a public meeting between county council and commissioners.
I know, so wait a second, you stop. Scott, did you say you did ask for a public hearing between the two, or you didn't?
No, 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 not a public hearing. That's why I want to be real clear on this. Just a public meeting between the commissioners and the council to discuss, to discuss the jail project publicly.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. I don't think that would be acceptable.
And we've had that today. I mean, the commissioners have had representatives here today that have answered every question that we had.
I don't think the rest of the public agrees.
Yeah, I'd like to have a public hearing.
Well, the commissioners held the public hearing. We're not the ones that hold the public hearing by the procedural process, and they had a public hearing, it was in their morning meeting, but I was there.
Can I clarify, sir, or do you need to set that down?
Yeah, you have to go to the podium.
Okay.
I need everyone to please sign in whenever you're...
I did, thank you very much. Mr. President, allow me to be very clear. A public hearing extends beyond a 9:00 AM Monday meeting, when most people can attend.
We don't disagree. I was, uh, I was with Mr. Hughes on the phone several times, discussing having an evening meeting with commissioners and council, but it didn't happen. That's all I'm going to say, is it didn't happen.
But why, sir? It's a simple request, but why?
It takes both bodies to be there. It wasn't doing good for the council to have a public meeting. We didn't have all the information. We're not, we're not the ones that are doing the project.
But you do decide whether or not to approve this expenditure, sir. And you can't choose, you can choose not to approve it until the commissioners have had a public hearing. That's my request. Raise your hand if you think that they shouldn't approve this until there's a public meeting.
But I wasn't going for a public hearing. I was very specific.
I understand.
That I wanted a meeting that was a public discussion in front of the public, so the public could review it, and I was going to try to do it a little bit like the Chamber of Commerce does. Sometimes I've been to meetings there, where they let you put your little dots up on the board.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's a great idea, sir.
Because I didn't want to get into a big old debate, and, but that's water over the dam now. We're here, and we're going to keep moving.
But, Mr. President, it doesn't have to be water over the dam.
No, I mean, as far as not having the meeting in the past.
Right. My, my...
We can't have what we didn't do.
My request, sir, is that you all do not vote to approve this.
I understand.
Until there's a public meeting. And I think the way you described it, sir, because it doesn't have to be, my read on interacting with some of the folks involved with the commissioners, is they're probably afraid people are just going to stomp and yell and not be of use. But I happen to believe, and I bet many of you share this belief, Delaware County is full of very smart individuals. And let's give them an opportunity. They may have ideas. They, it won't, yes, there will be some people who will be angry, and that anger needs to be heard, but there are people here that if you all force the commissioners to listen, and I can't believe we have to force them to listen, and give the public an opportunity to be heard, and tap them in, they can help. This isn't, doesn't have to be a hoop. They can help. These are smart people. Give them a chance to help. Don't vote until they have a chance to get help.
Come in, and if you may ask, have something different to say?
I understand your point, Mitch, but the public hearing was already held. I mean, the public hearing, and everybody that I was talking to, and I think including you, was that that would probably be the only opportunity for the public to have a way in on it, and that has already happened. It was advertised. I mean, it was, it was a public hearing, and a public hearing doesn't have to be after six o'clock. I mean, that's the commissioners' discretion on that, and they did what they were obligated to do.
I'm more interested in what we should do than what we're obligated to do.
Okay, sure.
Your turn.
All right. My name is Jonathan Mitchell. I'm pastor at Kirby Avenue Church of God, in the industry section of Muncie, and also newly president of the Industry Neighborhood Association, and an active member of the CCCCC, which is a body of clergy here in town. And I appeal to you all to slow down. I have been in meetings with, that Mr. Donati has put together, where there is an expert, a doctor from Ball State University, right here in our own community, that told that his expert opinion, there would be a significant detriment to moving the jail from the downtown area, on the downtown area, and it was further his opinion that it would lower property taxes or values to the area that it would be moved to. And so these are things that I don't believe have been properly vetted. Mr. Ballard, welcome to county government. I do, as a member of clergy, are you a member of clergy, sir?
I'm not a minister.
Okay. Are you a member of clergy? And I reason I ask this, sir...
No, 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 you can define what that means.
Reason, you know what it means. You know what it means. Don't insult anybody in here.
I'm not insulting anybody.
Well, let me tell you why I ask, sir, and I'm not meaning to be contentious, is that you made a response publicly to an inquiry by the members of clergy as to what the clergy ought to focus their attention on, and I think you owe the clergy of this community a public apology for those remarks, because you stepped outside of your area of expertise, sir. I am. That's your problem. You don't listen. You don't listen to my social media. Here's what the tie-in is, sir. Here's what the tie-in is, sir. The tie-in is, the tie-in is that this was a direct response to the issue. He responded to the issue. He responded to the issue and drew the clergy in and made disparaging remarks. And I, sir, resent that, and you owe us an apology.
Can you please take care of this gentleman?
I can take care of myself, sir.
All right.
I call a question.
You owe an apology. On a low four second term.
I have a motion on the floor to call for the question, which limits debate. Do I have a second?
I don't know, do you need a second?
I need a second, so we can vote on it.
You did, yeah. Larry made a motion.
I know, but the call, when you call for the question, you have to vote on the question first, on the, that limits debate, according to Robert's Rules of Order, correct? So we have to vote on the call for question to stop debate. Then we'll vote on the, on the, on the motion. Well, that's a fact. So I need a second for the call for the question. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quatton Bush.
Yes. Now, we have a motion on the floor, and to introduce, uh, resolution 20...
Ordinance.
Ordinance, I'm sorry. Ordinance 2019-006. Correct. Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Let's go back in time here. Tell me what we're voting on one more time.
The actual ordinance. We just voted to end discussion.
To introduce only?
To introduce only.
Introduce only.
First reading.
So we're introducing, to introducing the motion.
Correct. And then a month from now, there'll be another motion, second reading, as they call it, to actually approve the, approve the ordinance.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
No.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
I'm going to vote to introduce it, but I do have some more discussion, so yes.
Mr. Quatton Bush. No. Now, do you want to introduce the others? The other two ordinances, as we discussed earlier, are in the alternative. These are the funding ordinances. 004 is the ordinance to pledge the local income tax funds without the property tax backup. Ordinance 005 includes the property tax backup. Refer back to the UMBAL report, where they had the two scenarios on page two of that report. 005, ordinance 005 is scenario one. 004 is scenario two. Council can introduce both of them. You cannot ultimately pass both of them, but you could introduce both of them, and then give consideration next month of which, if either of them be what, to adopt, or you could introduce just one of them at this meeting, and the other one then would not be available for adoption next month. So the appropriate motion is to introduce, or introduction only, either ordinance 005 or 004. And then the other one could be considered if you wish to. Does the council have a preference as to which way you want to finance? Do you want to put them both on the floor?
I don't. If we put them both on the floor, can we do that together, since there are additional questions for the ordinance that just passed? Give us more time to figure out.
I think we should do them separately.
Okay.
Pass them both, or introduce them both.
Introduce them both, yes, sir. Or none, I mean, either way, I mean, if you don't want, I wouldn't introduce this one. But like Bill says, we can only pass second reading on one or the other. And Larry, I know you're concerned, and I talked with you about, uh, property tax backup, so I kind of listened to you on that one. Plus, I don't like paying that other $2 million interest. So we'll just, I'll accept a motion now for ordinance 2019-004. So moved. Moved by Larry.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Roll call.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
No.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Quatton Bush.
Yes. Now, I need a roll call. Oh, I mean, I need a motion to approve ordinance 2019-05.
Not approved, introduce.
I mean, introduce, I'm sorry. Thank you. Introduce. So moved.
Second.
By Larry, second by Jessica.
What was the ordinance number on the build, operate, transfer? Was it?
006.
It's 006.
Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Chambers. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quatton Bush.
Oh.
It was a no, yes.
Okay. I didn't understand what you said.
I'm sorry. I was thinking while I was doing it. Didn't speak plainly. Trying to think, I'm going to address the audience here. I apologize to the audience. I'm sorry that the gentleman felt the way he did. I was hoping he'd have positive comments, and Larry, thank you for bringing it up, causing me to do my job, I guess. I get a little argumentative myself sometimes, forget where I'm at, but the question he was bringing was something that he personally disagreed with, that wasn't a part of this meeting, was something that was on an email. Brian had already shared it with me. So thank you all for coming.
Just a minute. May I say something? And I guess I'm, I guess I'm speaking to the audience, too. There's not one of us sitting up here who would have treated one of you like Ryan was treated. And you want to know why, why we hesitate to have public meetings?
That's the reason.
Just take a look at what happened. I mean, this man was attacked personally. If I disagreed with him, I would call him. If I disagreed with something Eric did, I would call him. I would not stand up. There's not one of us that would treat you like, like we were treated, and I don't look for it to stop. I look for it to continue. But I'm telling you, it's not my job to build a jail. I wish, right now, the sheriff could take every one of you over to the jail, to tour the jail. I wish you could sit. I did, and I was amazed. I not only worry about the inmates, I worry about our police officers. They are not safe in that facility, as neither are the inmates. Something has to be done. We have to, we have to move forward with something. I understand your questions about drugs. I was personally robbed of all of my heirloom possessions, and it was due to drugs, but it was still a crime. It was still a crime against me that somebody should pay for. I'm sorry, it was to support their habit. Still a crime. How do we raise our children? I have a granddaughter that I have to say, you are responsible for your actions. You sometimes have to pay for your decisions, and that's what a jail is. That's, that's what a jail is. The person who robbed me is out on bond and has trafficked drugs from Dayton, Ohio, twice and been arrested since then. How many lives did that affect to the people they sold the drugs to? We don't want drugs, and we want it to, we want it to stop. We can't solve that problem. We can't solve that problem. We are, that is not the responsibility of this county council. I know, I saw a lot of eyebrows go up when I, when I seconded the motion, because it may have, it may have died. I don't want to get into another federal lawsuit. How many remember that, that federal lawsuit? How many of you remember what it cost, what we got into? I mean, there were some people who their personal lives were changed because, do we want to do that again? I don't. I don't. Does anybody out here know how much it is costing? Every month, we delay this in increased costs. Eric, how much per month?
I'm Dustin.
I'm sorry, Dustin. Eric, I'm sorry.
It's close to a quarter million dollars.
Every month, we delay. Is there anybody out here who thinks we do not need a new jail? Okay, and what's your solution?
Would you like to hear my solution? Is this an honest inquiry?
It's up, it's up to the president whether I can continue this or not, or whether I can go home.
You can have the floor, Jane, I'm not, I'm...
Okay, what would be your...
I'm here all day.
What would you want to do with the people who robbed me? What would you want to do with them?
Can you step up to the mic, Bill?
Yep.
Once somebody has robbed you, they have committed an act of violence against you, and at that point, you have a real crime.
That's right, yeah.
Possession is not a crime. Possession does not deserve somebody being in jail. Nobody deserves to sit in jail for the very fact that they can't afford to post bond. And we know that's why most of those people are in there. It's a crime of poverty. That jail criminalizes poverty.
But we didn't set that. We can't change it. We didn't establish that.
Can I ask a question on that one? Yeah, and there are a lot of people up there in the jail that can't afford things. But I've often, and I have had personal contact with inmates and tell me what they've done, what they made on a weekly basis. And they're broke, they're dead broke, they get a public defender. They're making $2,500 a week on it, that's what they got calling for possession. I mean, it's, how do we, how do you decipher which ones tell them the truth? They don't have money at the time. They have the money to support a $2,500 drug deal or drug habit a week. I love that, that kind of money in my pocket. It's the decisions that we've all, you know, I've been a commissioner for eight years, two-term councilman. Mitch is probably one of, he's critiquing me about not wanting to have a public hearing and whatnot. I've sat up here, I think we're in a good shape in our community. We get, we get, we get a lot of negative press, but when you look at a Delaware county, being Delaware county, over 100-some thousand people. And I can tell you the numbers, and it can be proven, I get the emails from my first eight years and these last two years, our daily intake on our jails. It's a consistent deal. It's anywhere from 300 to 350 who's maneuvering through this whole little system, and then it gets to Eric's, and then he's got more of that plus the civil side of it. That's, as bad as that sounds, it's really low percentage that we're, you know, we're running that kind of people through here, but we can't even contain the 300 people that we need to have in there on a daily basis. I've worked with a set of commissioners at one time, wanted to build a 1,500-bed jail, so we'll make all kinds of money. I was absolutely against that. There was no way, there's no money in people, there's no money in crime. If there was, the private sector had already been here and already built us a new jail for us. It's, Jane hit it round the head, or if you understand what our jail officers go through, or correction officers go through, they're working for over there for $35,000 seeing people that they normally don't hang around with. So we're constantly rotating employees in and out of there. It stresses the task of that man right there and his deputies trying to just maintain a decent staff to control 280, 311 people going through that facility at one time. This set of commissioners, when I was commissioner, this ed, it wasn't, wasn't even a factor because at the time, the city hadn't increased the Lloyd tax. So the only thing that the council could have done at that time was to build a jail and raise everyone's taxes. So this is why I tried to get that bot out there, people understand why we might be here at the bot, is it was never an option before. So then it takes, then it perceived that this bot agreement has been a fast-paced, run it down everyone's throat, and let's get it approved. What you don't understand is, it's just part of the 10 years of discussions that I've seen and been in, that's, and Scott, and every one of us has been in these discussions, meeting after meeting after meeting. The third sheriff I've had that will be in meetings after meetings, just to try to, what are we doing today? How do we, how do we work through today? So, you know, when I make comments about, this is only, I can't, I'm trying to decipher now, would I have done something different, maybe? Yeah, probably, maybe, yeah, maybe. I think everybody in this room had to be a commissioner, might have had some different, but the bottom line is, it's a lack of money without getting into people's tax, us, this council raising taxes. Because then, then we're taking 250, 300, whatever it is, out of your own pocket to build something maybe in town that will cost even more. It's just, we're here with the best, the lowest, and I hate to say the cheapest, it's the most price-cost reduction that they can do right now with the money they have, with the money that's been created with the increase of Lloyd, to pay for this daily problem we have. And the daily problem, and Jane hit it, Mazma, we're going to be in a situation where we're gonna have a correction officer hurt, or even worse. And if you go over there and you see, if you put us all in this room, and we're in this room together for, for two weeks on end, you have, we only have about a couple hours and where our tensions are high. Now, most of us, intelligent people, smart people, we have disagreements, but we're all good people. But imagine somebody's not so good, and put those same people in this same square footage right here, and then ask them, somebody that's 25 years old is thinking, oh my lord, I'm just trying to make a living in this community for $35,000. And then he gets in that environment, and that's not for me. And then they leave. So I mean, it's, I'm not trying to get off the skew here, there's just a lot of people doing a lot of good in this community and for the treatments. And I believe in the public input, I don't, but at the same point, we have elected officials that got us to where we're at right now. And the reason why I introduced these is because I believe in introduction of anything I believe or don't believe in. Because I believe, I might not be the guy that's right. And that takes me back to this council. I have seen, and I've talked to Ron, is that fact, I don't think that I'm elected to kill an elected official's business and they're within their budget or within their means just because I disagree with it. It doesn't matter, because I'm not that guy. I don't believe I'm one of seven to be that guy saying, no, just because I don't like it. I believe I'm there because I think somebody has spent a lot of time getting where it's at. And I believe I'm gonna vote, and I'm gonna vote on it purely if it can be afforded and they still can contribute to help our community in the county general fund budget. If they can't prove that, which I think they have, then I won't. But it's, it's all about each elected official doing their own job, but working together to get to that idea. And we have done that behind the scenes. Now, Scott hasn't, he's still asking questions on the square footage, but Scott has had a lot of hours in it, too. But when we take, when we come up here next month, you know, I would love to have somebody say, hey, you know, tell me something that, you know, the numbers-wise, I mean, I don't think I should kill this job, this proposal, based on whether I agree with it or not. Because I've told James I don't agree with some of the things that got in it. But I don't think you elected me to kill that just because I disagree with it, because what, the next day you agreed with it. But back to the guy that doesn't have any money, I mean, they have plenty of money when they go do the drug deal. And I've sat over there, one guy here not too long ago said he made $2,500 a week. I'd give anything for $2,500 a week.
Not the way he was making it.
Not the way he should have.
You see, sir, this, this is, it's a tough issue.
I don't know what your right answer is.
It is a tough issue.
It's a tough issue. And, and we are not county commissioners. I've been told that before. I served eight years as a county commissioner. Most of you in this room aren't old enough to remember that. I remember it distinctly. Because I was elected to office and didn't know that we were in federal court with a jail suit. And the first meeting I was called to was before I took the oath of office in December, and was told that we'd agreed with a federal judge to build a jail. So here I am, just like Ryan Ballard, sitting there, brand-new county commissioner, had no idea it was even an issue. At least he knows it's an issue.
However, I want to say this for the record, too. Ryan had said on several meetings long before coming to this meeting about this thing right here, he just wasn't coming in here today and opening this and seeing this. I mean, he has, he has a lot of hours getting hooked up to speed.
I feel bad for Ryan, because this is, this is probably the most important decision he's gonna make the whole time up here on the council. And, and he has done his homework. I mean, we, we have had discussions with Ryan, and it's, this is a tough meeting to come into and be your, be your first meeting. And I know, for a fact, over the last year, I've been extremely tough on this set of commissioners and John Brook and the rest of the group to answer questions, but I think, you know, that's how we eventually get to this point. You know, I, could this be better? Maybe. But we've pushed it to be the best that it can be, in my opinion. There are things you can pick on in here, and there are some big things I think that decisions need to be made on. And if this is approved, those decisions will have to be made down the road, and whether I'm here or not, or anybody else is here, somebody's gonna make those decisions down the road.
I appreciate, I appreciate you coming to the microphone, but I still haven't heard what, what you think we could do to solve this problem.
Right. So, first off, I'm not here to pretend that this is an easy issue. I mean, I'm not here proposing something simple, I'm not, I'm not saying that this is not a complicated issue. You've all said that it is, and I agree. Well, my question is to you, you know, you talk about, I'm not gonna vote against something because I disagree with it. Okay, well, the question I'll ask is, do you think it'll work?
I think so.
Okay.
I do.
I don't.
You know, and I'll tell you why I do, because being involved, it doesn't, run for office, get elected, that'd be fantastic. Mitch, run for office. I don't need this job, I do it because I've really enjoyed working with the people. I don't make my living here, I don't take the benefits. I do it because I genuinely enjoy doing it. But you know one thing that I've learned since, since '07, is that elected officials come and go. This machine keeps on going. And I have watched the employees in this, in this building, in that building, and other areas that support our services, city employees, they all seem to tackle the problem and get it done and move everything forward for the next elected official. Now, the elected officials make some minor steers along the way, like steering the Borg, but at the end of the day, it's not, we're not doing nothing. We're voting, setting a little bit of direction, but at the end of the day, those jailers, those courts, the people within the prosecutor's office, all those people, they're gonna make it work.
Right.
I believe that.
I guess the question I would have for you is, can you show me the community where arresting the drug problem away actually works? I mean, we've had decades of this policy.
Arrest the way out of there.
Exactly. We've had decades of this policy. I mean, you're right, Mr. Quaid can push, I don't remember when you were a commissioner, but I do know that you were here, you were around here the last time that they promised a new jail was gonna solve all our problems. How'd that work out for us? Here we are again.
No, we were only trying to solve the crowding problems. We had a lawsuit against us that said our jail was overcrowded, and we lost, in a sense.
Yeah.
And just for the record, I was a county commissioner. We had done all of these processes, we did have some public hearings, presented it to the public. Bids opened, and a council member changed his vote and voted against the bond issue, which is where we're at right now.
Right.
And that's why we have what we have now. There weren't any courts in that building in the original design. It was a $13 million project.
Can I go on the record to apologize to Mr. Ballard?
Pardon?
May I go on the record to apologize to Mr. Ballard on behalf of the public for the way that he was treated?
Well, you'll have to come to the podium.
Can I do that?
Well, real quick, I do have one more thing to add. You were asking if, do we think it will work?
Yeah.
So I had the opportunity with Jane and other council members to go to the jail and actually tour it and see, I've never had a reason to go in there before, so this was my first opportunity to see it. It's, I don't know if you really paid attention to a lot of the photos in the Star Press, or if those photos even did it justice.
I'm following it very closely.
It's way worse than those photos pictured, and, you know, Larry was talking about, you put us all in a room together for two weeks and how emotions are going to be. There literally is a room where there's like 42 men sleeping in like Moses boats.
Right.
In a room.
That's right.
That's not okay, right? And then you have folks that are in cell blocks, where you may have someone who might be a real bad guy, with someone who may have mental illness. This new jail facility would give us the opportunity to actually separate people out, so they're not co-mingling with each other. That would give us, I would assume, more opportunity to help those folks that need assistance.
Right. But see, that's what I want to zero in on here. Like, yeah, it's tragic that the jail is overcrowded. It really is. But is the, is the solution to the problem that we're putting too many people in cages is the only solution to that problem is, I guess we need to build more cages?
I think a great solution is to reach out to the children, right? Like, I mentored through, I did through Project Leadership, and, you know, we talked about Jane's granddaughter. We have an opportunity here to really work through Big Brothers and Big Sisters or any other organization, because you know there's some children who are seeing their, you know, like, their mom doing bad things, and now you've got Jane and her grandson trying to explain to their daughter why mommy's not around.
Put that funding into us, then. Put that funding and that money into us that are dealing with the children every day in this community.
Right.
That's great, that's fantastic. You know, can you just comment, please? That's fantastic. I mean, yes, we'll reach out to the children. What about the adults? What about the people that are already in there? Is this going to help people who use drugs? I don't believe it will. Is this going to, is this going to help the person who's mentally ill next to the real bad guy? Maybe the problem is that we put somebody who's mentally ill in a jail in the first place.
Just to let you know, I'm on Community Corrections and Have Been, it's one of the favorite committees that I serve on there, and the commissioners have developed a program to get people out of jail that they think are, now, the sheriff has to approve that, but these programs are available, there are lots of programs available through Community Corrections. I know Community Corrections deals with some of the not-for-profits to help out, like the Wetsy Mission, and some of those that may, may fall into you guys, Bailey Wicks, I guess, there, but, but there's a lot of, there are a lot of programs that the government already does, the county government already does, that gets people out of jail. Now, there are people in that jail, and whether you believe me or not, that, that can't. You know, either they've committed a crime that is, is too offensive to take the risk of letting them out of the jail, or they're not eligible for a number of reasons. And I don't know whether sheriff's offices have had a chance, because we had a changeover to evaluate the population yet in the jail to find out if there are more opportunities or not. But, but the jail as it sits now, when I first became councilman, I toured the jail, and it was, you know, it was a jail. Four years later, I toured it again, and it's, it's gotten substantially worse. And I think we've all come to the conclusion that, that there's no way to salvage what's over there right now. There's no scenario that works either expense-wise or makes sense, you know, to what's there. We've all developed that, we've, this has been a year-long process that a lot of us have put a lot of time in on. There have been, you know, I explained it before, numerous meetings. And is this the best way? We're never gonna know that answer, but we can't do, we can't do any, you know, we can't sit back and do nothing.
I agree. I'm not saying we should do nothing. I'm saying by the time somebody reaches Community Corrections, they've already been criminalized. I'm saying we're asking the wrong questions here. We're asking, how do we deal with the people we arrest, instead of asking, how do we, how do we create less crime? How do we arrest fewer people? How do we address these social conditions so that people aren't driven to crime in the first place? Why is our jail population increasing while our county's population is decreasing? These things don't make sense. There's a contradiction there somewhere that needs to be addressed before somebody lands in jail.
Statutorily, I don't think that's the county council's responsibility, sir.
No, but you have the responsibility to agree whether, to agree whether this is the right approach to this problem or not. That is what you decide, when you decide whether to fund this. You put the funding behind this, you're saying, yes, I agree, this is the right approach. That's, that's all I have to say.
I have to agree, disagree. Thanks, thanks for your time.
I'm Andrew Greger, I just wanted to go on the record to apologize to Mr. Ballard for being personally implicated. Many of us who have serious concerns about this project in no way have any personal animus against any one of you. And we would never desire to talk or speak to you in a way that was belittling. We are very aware that all of us are in a difficult spot, including the commissioners and the council and the sheriff's department, in order to take care of the laws as the way they are currently written. Many of us are working in the community at a grassroots level, and we would love to see money going into addressing root issues to the causes, rather than so much of our resources going in at the end, where the flip side of the problem. Now, I know that that is not your purview or your responsibility, but that's why some of us are so passionate. But again, there, this is not a personal referendum on any of you. This is a question about the way that the system is currently constructed. And we're trying to, to put our best words in anywhere we can to say, how can we together stop in the society spending most of our money on incarcerating instead of...
stop in the society spending most of our money on incarcerating instead of educating or public health crises and things like that? So again, we know that the current jail is in disarray. I've toured it with the former sheriff and we would never desire anything negative to happen. So when we are raising questions, it is with the utmost respect wanting to work together with you for solutions for the future. So thank you for your leadership and your work. Even if we disagree, our goal is not to tear you down.
Mr. Ballard, just, I don't know whether you know what he does for profane, but he's in a very empathetic part of life that's the most fragile part of life, every day.
Sure. Again, I have no knowledge of that.
So I appreciate your comments. I have some more business to do.
We appreciate everybody's input too.
Is there someone who's a charity user who's not able to approach the podium?
One, one, one.
Sorry, this is Jody Michelle Powers. She has asked me to interpret for her.
One, one.
May I make one statement?
Please.
Thank you very much.
I know I tend to make motions, but... No. I push my way to the front.
So I appreciate you letting me talk for a minute.
Yeah. I just want to say that the pastor who got frustrated...
He did not mean any harm. He did not mean any harm.
I know that, but I'm a person with a disability.
I know this because I'm a person with a disability.
And when I get frustrated...
About not being heard.
I'm really messed up.
And I go off. It's horrible.
It's horrible. Many of us are trying to tell you that we don't believe that we are being heard. And I believe the pastor messed up.
Because we are so frustrated about not being heard.
And we all agree that we need a new jail plan.
We just don't believe that this is the right one for this community.
I just want to remind you that it is hard to always advocate.
When we are different from the people we are advocating. In the future...
If you ever hear me, go off.
If you ever hear me, go off?
Yes. Just give me a moment.
And I will return to myself. And most people are that way. We just need a moment to return to ourselves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, when this is shown on television, as it will be, and you watch it, please understand that that's why public hearings are dreaded. This has been a group that I feel like that we can talk to. Apologies need to be made to our guests today that they had to endure this. I am, I am sorry.
Is this one a different note? Cool.
It's kind of open.
Okay. Well, I did want to make sure that at some point this afternoon, I guess now, that I could personally thank and publicly thank the Hamilton Fire Department. Sorry, I'm getting emotional. I had a fire at my house on January 4th and they were excellent. They were there quickly. And they're just a volunteer fire department. They were there quickly. They were professional. And thank God it stayed in my furnace and I still have a home.
Thank you.
But there, I just wanted to say thank you.
Damn, yeah, we've always gone to the pig roast every year.
I go to the hog roast every year, so I'm not a...
You'd be out there and bawl, wouldn't you?
I will eat fair hogs, but...
And if you just knew how many times I have changed my mind on this project by getting more information. Matter of fact, I changed it once this morning.
Are we doing the resume?
We just gather information and make decisions and hold me accountable. That's okay.
That's why, Ms. Councilwoman, we want to have a public hearing. As you just heard there, people just want to be heard and you might get more information. You ask them, you ask the right question, Madam Councilwoman, what's the solution? I think many of us just want to pause and have the commissioners and have the council have an opportunity for the public to come out outside of business hours to answer your question, to give you more information, ma'am. That's the goal. I think you asked the exact right answer. And maybe it is that there's no other solution. But I think the commissioners made this harder on themselves by refusing to create opportunities to listen. Because Jody said it right, people just want to be heard, ma'am. Just give them an opportunity.
But as we are doing that, remember, one of these federal lawsuits, they're going to throw it against the wall and it's going to stick.
That's part of democracy, is listening to people.
And we're going to have somebody else...
Can we get back to our regular business now?
Yes, we're going to have somebody else building that jail except us, and I don't want that.
Thank you all again for coming. I've still got some things on the agenda here to work out. One, I had proposed a resolution to the council members involving the, it's a resolution regarding the impact of jail justice center projects on the general fund. Do you want to act on that or not? Does anybody have an opinion?
I say no.
Okay, I know you will. You already told me I don't. Does anybody else have any comments? Well, we'll turn that one down on a wrong, bad idea. We also have a resolution and a contract with the new sheriff that will be pending. The commissioners haven't finalized their process yet, so we can't do ours till they do. For those that are left in the audience that care, this council has worked diligently across party lines for several years to try to get this council in what we call in the black so we don't have to borrow money. We're on the verge of that. And I'd like to thank everybody that's been a county employee in any way, shape, form, and helping in whatever it is. We're approaching our goal. That's why I'm so adamant about protecting that general fund balance. The latest reports are very positive. I'll put it out because I'm afraid it might change. Emily would like to talk to us about something in the courts.
Hello. Wow, what a meeting. Can I cast something out really quickly? You know, I love, you know, I love my handout. This shouldn't take but just a few minutes. Great. Thank you.
Will you?
You'll give me two? All right.
So this was discussed at finance by Judge Dowling, but she couldn't be here today. She asked that I present it to the full council. We have started, and we've been planning, in a planning phase out at juvenile court for a family recovery court. It's similar to drug court, which we have in circuit court for at this time. What is happening with family recovery court, it's helping parents and families. So it's not helping the children, it's helping the parents that are involved in the system. It's for quicker reunification, less termination of parental rights, more judicial oversight, and more intensive services. So just like we were talking, we need more services. This is one of those programs through the court system that we're trying to provide for the parents. They've been planning, are in the planning phase for a year. Their policy and procedural manual is in place and they have, they have to have a court coordinator to start taking cases. So they have grant money to do that. We have a court reporter right now that has been taking on that extra work. We would like to give her half-time court reporter duties and half-time court coordinator duties. And in doing that, we would like to do half-court pay and half coordinator pay. The drug coordinator, the drug court coordinator, her salary is 45.4, so that's where we got that 45.4 salary. And they need to start taking families in April. So we wanted to come to you first before we just came to you with a proposal of money. We wanted to explain everything and then, and if you guys are in favor of this, then we will present it at the next council meeting for the actual appropriation of funds. The grants are even approved and so the sheet that you have in front of you, it shows you that if we pay half and half, what her new, what her new salary will be. And it will save the county general money, $14,800 for this year alone. Now, we are all under the understanding, including the employee, that if no more grant money is found or we don't come up with another solution, she will go back to her regular pay and we will find out another way to take care of this. But we have to do something right now to get this going. So my question to you is, do I have support to give her half grant money and half court salary money and give her combined salary?
Do you have the money for FICA and all that?
Yes. That's included in that, if you see over to the side where it says FICA and PERF, that comes out of, half of the FICA and half of the PERF comes out of the grant. So that's that total, the 23.6, sorry, the 45.4 minus the 18.3 and the 14.02 and the 20.53, that's all of it coming out of that grant money. So it covers half of it.
Where's the other half come from?
It's still coming out of county general. But it's actually coming out of her salary, but it's actually decreasing the county general, what they fund.
Okay, this is already a position that's funding now.
Right. So it's saving the county some money. And everybody's in agreement that if we can't come up with something different, then she'll just go back to pay and she'll have to do it at that pay, at that pay level if she chooses to. But it is a lot more work. It's a lot more, and she's doing that on her own time at this point. So we kind of want to implement that. Any questions? Do, can I come back in February and ask for this appropriation and adjust her pay after the next meeting? Mr. Quakenbush, my friend?
Do I show him? Show your hand if you'd like for him to go back.
Oh, I would want her to come back.
She's going to come back.
She's going to be here.
You're going to be there anyway.
Yeah. So I can place that at the next one and you guys will understand and remember what this is all about.
If you file the paperwork, it will matter.
I think they're wore out, people.
I know they are. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just FYI, that was run through Community Corrections and we were unable to fund that because...
Because they aren't facing felonies. It's only if they're facing felonies that they can be used, the DOC money.
Just briefly, can you tell us if the new pre-trial person has had an effect on...
They're taking, yeah. I don't know if they've had an effect. They had to get her through some certification for the IRAS assessments and she's taking on, they didn't put on a full caseload because she's brand new. I think they're going to have on a full caseload by the end of either February, I believe. They were giving her like a month to kind of build up her caseload. So I can have, in February, at the February meeting, I can get you guys some numbers to tell you where we're at.
That'd be lovely.
Okay.
I think that a lot of the people who are in the room today would like to hear something about that.
Okay.
Mary, down there all by yourself, you're awful quiet. You want to say something today?
What do you want me to say?
Come on.
I'm not against the jail.
Okay.
I am against it and everything out there.
I think we've all got the same problem. I don't know what to do. I agree. I'm like, Jane said she changed her mind on two or three things today and it's the same way with all of us. We just keep trying to come up with an conclusion it'll work. One across the street did work for a while. Everybody condemns it, but it did work for a while. Anybody else? I hear your comments were looked up today. Appreciate that very much. Came from a different point of view. Your experience.
That never does.
Your experience, though, in law enforcement is different than mine.
I think they have another meeting in here.
Well, that's okay. We'll have it.
Let's get, we've got to eat sometime.
And Ron, that's your...